Okay, we're, we're ready to go here in Spanish Fork City Council meeting, March 18th, 2025. Thank you, everyone, for joining us in the audience and, and online, wherever you may be. We're down a couple of council members, well, one council member. We've got Councilman Euler down at the Water Conference for the city today, so we appreciate him, him doing the city's work down there. And Councilman Marshall is joining us virtually, so we'll be able to, to hear from him as he's at a different conference across the country. So, we appreciate the council being here, appreciate all you being here. And we'll get our meeting started like we always do with a prayer and a pledge. Councilman Cardon has the prayer, and then Councilwoman Beck will lead us in the pledge.
All right, I'll say the prayer. Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to be gathered together this evening. We're thankful, Father, for this amazing place that we get to live and to get to serve. We are thankful, Father, for those who serve in our city, especially those servicemen and women who protect us day and night and to keep us healthy and safe. We ask thee, Father, to please bless that this meeting may go well, that we may be able to talk about the things that are going on within the city. We ask thee, Father, to, again, please bless those servicemen and women. We say it in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please stand and repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Takes us to follow up to previous public comments. Do we have anything, manager, parents, that we need to address from last meeting?
Yeah, last week, or last council meeting, we had a, maybe one of our youngest council meeting guests come and express a concern about a sidewalk on, if I remember, at 820 East, with some overgrowth and, and things that were coming off of some neighboring properties and, and in all reality flooding into the sidewalk, growing into the sidewalk and, and the walk space, so, and, and impinging on the travel path for junior high students. We were really grateful for her feedback. We had some crews that went out and checked that out the next morning, and I think by the end of that same Wednesday, had it all cleaned off. I know you got a, an email from, from young Ms. Westman, expressing her gratitude for that action, but wanted to report back here for the public, as they may have watched that council meeting, know that that was resolved the next day. So, we really appreciated her thoughtful remarks and, and concern for her community.
Good stuff. Thank you. Thank you for, for her coming and thanks for following up. Takes us to item four on our agenda, the public comments section. Anybody from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? For any items that are not on the agenda, please come up and either ask questions or make statements to the city council and mayor. Yes, please. Please make sure Shelley gets your name, rank, and serial number. Just your name is good, then.
My name is Judd Messenger. I've been a resident of Spanish Fork since 2006. My wife and I serve on the Spanish Fork Community Theater Council, and I've been a part of the Spanish Fork City Arts Council. Today, I'm here representing The Ruth. The Hale Center Theater of Orem has, now, now has a new location in Pleasant Grove. It's, the new title is The Ruth and Nathan Hale Theater at DoTERRA Campus. It's a bit of a mouthful, so we call it The Ruth. We've been open and operating since early January, kind of late December is when we had our grand opening. The next production that opens next week is Jersey Boys, and as a, kind of a gesture to help get the word out, I've got vouchers for the mayor and council and city staff members, and so I just wanted to pass those out. Any questions before I do that?
Questions for Judd?
I'm gonna go see Cinderella in April. One of my coworkers is Cinderella, and her husband is Prince Charming.
I saw that for the first time last week, and it's hilarious. It's so fun, yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited to go see that new, new place. That'll be good to have in, in Utah Valley.
Yeah, it's a terrific resource. Still have all the great productions and the classes that were at the, the last location, so, it's good.
Well, thank you for the tickets.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
That's awesome. I was just looking at Cinderella tickets yesterday. Thank you so much.
The Ruth, that's what we're calling her, right?
It's good for two tickets each, though.
Perfect.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask, do we need a all-car pull together, but this'll get two of us in?
Thank you, Judd. Appreciate that, and thanks for, for serving on the, on the committee here in Spanish Fork as well. Anybody else from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? Yes?
Hi. So, hopefully, this is the appropriate place to address this. I've spoken to Mayor Mendenhall. I spoke to Stacy Beck. She was great.
Sorry, get, get your name, so...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Jacqueline Thompson.
Thanks, Jackie.
And I also spoke to Councilmember Euler, and I believe this thing is, like, right in your floor.
Yeah.
And I believe that several citizens, Spanish Fork citizens, have also reached out to members. I also reached out to, to, gosh.
Chief Johnson.
Chief Johnson. Sorry, I was, like, I was trying to remember the, um, I've spoken to the city. I have reached out to supervisors in the police department, so I'm gonna try to make this really quick, because I'm a wordy person. Over COVID, I had to bring, I was moving in with my parents, and I had to bring a shipping container that included, or actually, storage that included all of my business over. I found at the time that there was nothing that could be brought in, because everything was shut down. And I was told by someone that a shipping container, you know, can get there. I call, I called the city, my stepfather, who was a police officer who's now deceased, also called the city, to see if there were any requirements, like permit-wise, we have a seventy-foot RV parking on the side of our house, and it was a forty-foot unit. I was told at the time that all I needed to do was to make sure that I set it behind the, um, front face of the house, and that they recommended, but didn't say it was a requirement, that I had to walk away all the way around it, just in case there were utilities. There were no utilities, but I, I said, okay, great. We were delayed at the port, and we called, again, several months later, just to make sure that there hadn't been any rule changes, because my stepfather was very concerned. At that time, I called, my stepfather also called, because he wanted to make sure I had it right. And my insurance called, because I needed to insure everything that was gonna be inside of it, and they wanted to make sure that it would be up to code, or they said they couldn't do it. All of them were told the same thing. So, we proceeded. I paid for a very expensive unit to be brought in and placed it exactly as said. We also reached out to multiple neighbors, just to make sure no one would have a problem with it. Our plan was to paint it the same color as the house. We got paint for it and everything. Fast forward to about three, four years later, and I got a notice while I was out of state stating that, that because I had a ship, that there was an issue with the shipping container and a pod, because I'd had a flood in my basement, and the crew apparently had placed a pod on my property when, that I didn't know while I was out of town. And they, and a couple other little things, and they, and so I immediately, you know, I called the company. We had the pod moved. It was moved, it was on the street. I didn't ask for that, but we had it moved to my driveway to make sure we were in compliance, and we dealt with the other issues, and I reminded them that I had no issue with the shipping container.
I'm gonna give you an, an extra minute right here to kind of wrap it up.
Sure, I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. So, anyway...
But if you can stay after and speak more about it, we'll give you some time after.
Of course. So, fast forward, they, I didn't hear anything for a year, so I assumed we were resolved. I got another notice back in, I believe, April. That was when I called you, mayor, and I mentioned it, and you kind of told me, yeah, I don't think it's gonna probably be a problem. I'll, you know, reach out and see what, you know, needs to be... I did not hear anything from them. Again, I called them at the time, and they kind of tried to, you know, strong-armed me. I told them there was no code issue, so there's no issue. So, I assumed they dropped it. In September, an officer, Ballantyne, who's now retired, came and brought me a criminal ticket for this. I informed them that there was, again, no issue, and then I proceeded to call his, his supervisor. The supervisor said, you know, like, let's work this out, and I spoke to an officer at the city council or city office, and they told me, well, you know, we still think it's out of code, and I'm like, I left head attorney, look at it. It's not. And I said, well, what if it were, you know, on wheels, if it's a trailer? And they said, yeah, sure, do that. We'll put it in compliance. We wrote a written agreement that if I did that, that they would tear up the ticket. I did that. They did not tear up the ticket. And, you know, I, we could go for another twenty minutes on that, so I'm gonna leave it there. But ultimately, I've done everything in my power. It was past the statute of limitations. It was not a code violation. I then completed a $7,700 plan, and I still have not, I still have this ticket that I have to go, and it's caused, I've, it's cost me now over fifteen thousand lost wages, and I've had two trips that I can't go on, because I have to be a here-for-court date. So, I'm a single mom. This is not, like...
Let's see if we can discuss it after...
Yeah, so anyways, I just figured to put it on the record, and you guys can, you know, chat about it. So, thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it. Sorry for going over.
No, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Are you seeing none? It takes us to council comments for council reports. Sorry, getting a little close there. Let's start over here with Councilman Took.
Yes, thank you, mayor.
And go this way, Councilwoman Beck.
Appreciate it. Let's go ahead and start with our president of the Chamber of Commerce, Kathleen Levitz, with us this evening.
Thank you, everyone, for the time. Appreciate it. A few things coming up. We have Business of the Month. We'll be celebrating tomorrow is Prime IV Health and Wellness. So, we'll be celebrating them on Wednesday, March 19th, at 1:00 p.m. Noon Networking will be this week as well, on March 20th, at the Hampton Inn. Grace Ainger, who's the owner of Veronica Michaels now, is going to be educating on changing the conversation on cancer in the workplace. I guess it's kind of an issue that's come up, where employees are sacrificing their health, not getting screenings, not chatting about the results of those screenings with their employers for fear of how that will impact their work environment. So, she's gonna be educating us on resources that are available for employers, and how to change that conversation around cancer and health issues. So, that will be a wonderful one. Then, we've got April 19th is the Easter egg hunt. We're well underway getting things going with that. And then, May 14th is the Rotary Club Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Golf Tournament. So, those are the important dates coming up. Thanks, you guys.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Sure appreciate you being here with us. That's actually all I've got, too. So, thanks.
Perfect. Councilman Cardon?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just a few things. So, first, from the arts council. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago. They have a few events happening soon. On March 23rd, which is a Sunday, at 6:00 p.m., it's actually at the Mapleton North State Center, 475 North, 1,000 West. They're gonna do an interfaith Easter choir concert. So, want to attend that. We also have Shrek auditions going on for the yesterday's community theater, or Spanish Fork Community Theater production. Those will be on April 24th and 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00, and then on the 26th, from 9:00 to noon. You just need a few bars of music there, so get your singing voices ready. And then, currently, we have, they're doing, the youth theater is doing a production of Willy Wonka, actually is going on tonight at 7:00, so I'll just need to be done here in about forty-five minutes, if that's all right?
Got it.
And then Thursday, Friday, at the same time, and then Saturday at 2:00. So, that's going on with the arts council. U-City Council's still going strong. They have a lot going on service-wise, getting ready to help with the Easter egg hunt and some different things like that. They only have two more months, and so registration for next year's U-City Council will be opening soon, so I'll try to send some things out or talk about it in here, just to get more kids involved with that. Last thing that I have is, last week, I was able to attend, or go out to Washington, D.C. with the mayor and our city manager for some National League of City and Towns meetings. It was good to have some interactions with some of our local, or reps across the, the nation, get to know them a little bit, and then also to meet with our local reps. Really good experience. There's a lot of things happening there, and let's just say, there's a lot better things happening in the city, where we work with functionality than sometimes happens, as we see on cable news in D.C. That's all I got, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Cardon. Amen. Councilwoman Beck?
I do not have anything tonight, mayor.
Okay, perfect. The only thing I have to mention, yes, still a lot of work going on in, in a lot of different departments, a lot of different areas of the city, but the, the human aspect of, of our city, won't go into great detail about it, but we're, we're getting to be a larger city, forty-eight thousand people strong, but I know through our communities, through our church congregations, through the aisles of the grocery store, we still know a lot of each other and a lot of each other's families. And, and so, this week has been particularly tough for some families that, kind of long-term families in, in Spanish Fork, and so, just want to make mention to them, their families, some of them in the hospital, and, and some of them passing, passing away, that, that I know their, their extended families are thinking about them, their neighborhoods are thinking about them, the city as a whole is thinking about them. And so, to the Swenson, Reed, Bun, and Payne families, specifically this week, some, some pretty tough, tough circumstances, and, and your whole city is standing with you. So, take care of your neighbors, reach out. People, people going through some tough times, and that's the way to keep our city small, is, is know about those instances and, and offer some, some comfort. Okay, that's all I have for, for council comments. Staff reports are next.
Shane has any?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, Shane is online.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I'm good.
You're done?
Thanks, mayor.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thought he'd have a lot.
Yeah, I thought he would, too.
I thought about it. I mean, have a written dialogue. It's like, I don't know, forty-five minutes, but I'll pass.
Submit it for the record. We'll get it in the record, Shane. Thank you. Council, council comments takes us to staff reports. Any staff reports? We lost our city manager. Do we have anything that is under staff reports?
Not that I'm aware of. Dave, any?
No, I don't believe we do.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to seven of the agenda, the consent items, A and B, minutes of the last meeting, and the 90 West, 100 South Real Estate Purchase Contract. Any questions for the consent items from the council?
No, I move to approve the consent items.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Cardon. All in favor, say yes.
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 Thank you, Shane. That is approved. Takes us to item eight, two items on our public hearing agenda tonight. Item A is the ordinance for the Whispering Pines Zone Change.
Brandon's got a tie on.
Brandon, put a tie on. How you doing? Thanks for being here.
Yeah, I've got a tie.
I like it.
Those stairs are brutal. Let's jump right in. These next two items are...
Do you have a clicker?
I do not.
Okay.
Can I just give you, like, a head nod? These next two items, we've got the zone change, and then the corresponding preliminary plat with it, two separate motions. Feel free to stop me at any time. This first one we'll look at is called Whispering Pines. It's there at the mouth of the canyon, next to the Finger Hut Building, rather large piece of property. The council and the planning commission looked at it last year, let's go ahead and next slide, and updated the general plan designation. It previously was slated to be all industrial. We did work with the property owner for over two years, looking at different concepts of how the property might be used. One of the key things that triggered that discussion was some of the topography and its proximity, adjacent to the golf course, the river, potential for other things. The applicant did have some fallback concept plans, if they did go through with developing it all industrial, but I, I hope after the presentation, you'll see that it's a good, a good move forward. And so, once again, general plan was changed last year to mixed use, which does allow for residential uses on the property. That's one of the, the uses that we consider to be consistent or correspond well with the mixed-use designation. This is the current zoning of the property, light industrial, and then there is a corner, I don't know if we have a laser. Okay. There is a corner piece that's reserved for a future commercial pad there at the intersection of Powerhouse Road and Highway 6. Let's go to the next slide, please. All perfect. All right, which, which buttons am I supposed to press?
So, this one will go to the next slide. That'll go back to the back slide. This one should be your pointer.
One with the laser? Okay, perfect. This is a, a map that we've had our GIS department put together that identifies the changes that are being requested with the zone change. You can see portions of the property, such as here along the canal and above Dripping Rock Trail in the river. That would go to public facilities, which would be improved, open, open space, park space. There's also a trailhead proposed with a parking lot. That would also be public facilities. And then, just to clean up, public facilities would be extended along Highway 6 for the properties that are owned by UDOT. But then, the majority of the property would be, the request is to rezone it to R3 with the master plan development overlay. Let's go to the next slide, please. Oh, never mind. All right. This is a beautiful drawing. I, no offense to the engineers, they tend to like landscape architect plans better, but a little softer, a little nicer. This is a, a color exhibit of their landscaping plans, shows the design and the layout of the property. Hopefully, some of the things that jump out to you are the, the network of the public streets, where the buildings are placed and where they're not placed. If we go to the next slide, this is, and I'll get into that in just a second, this is the next phase, or, excuse me, the next page, this is the phasing plan. One of the key issues that was identified early on is access to the site. There's been numerous conversations as far as compliance with the code, adequate access for public safety, and adequate access for the convenience of the, of the future residents. And so, some of the early improvements identified with this phasing plan, as you'd see, Powerhouse Road and Finger Hut be improved. And then, while the phases advance through the project, you'd also see some temporary connection improvements made to Gomex Road, which would operate as a emergency access. It's not intended to be utilized by the residents for day-to-day activities. And then, the good news, and I, I hate going first, because I steal the thunder from all the, the hard work that the applicant's done, but we did get significant funding for a bridge and intersection right here, just off the property, that would provide a permanent access and realign with Highway 89. This is just a snippet from the, the letter of intent that we received from the applicant, just identifying what they'd like to do and how they'd like to do it, everything we've kind of talked about tonight. This right here is a great map. It shows red areas that would be subject to slope and hillside restrictions. And so, as you can see from the design and layout, the applicant's done a great job in manipulating the lots around it to limit disturbances to those areas. We have had other renderings that contemplated possible excavation and, and work of that sort at a larger scale, but that was not encouraged. And so, we appreciate the, the compliance with the code and the identification of those areas. This next one's important. One of the things that will, and I think I've got a later slide that shows the amenities, the applicant's been thoughtful, and how those are laid out and placed. One of the things, and it's kind of hard to see, you can see the faint pink lines. Those are trail improvements that would be completed. So, you can see, not only would it extend right here down Powerhouse Road with the connection to existing facilities that connect with Dripping Rock and the Spanish Fork River Bottoms Trail, but in the future, as this intersection is built up here, residents and trail users would have the ability to connect into Mapleton's trails, which then go on and on through other jurisdictions. So, it's a great connection piece, great dispersment throughout the site in addition to the trails. We've got, you know, obviously, public improvements, such as sidewalks and things of that nature, to make it as walkable and inviting and friendly as possible for, for the residents and visitors. We'll jump into a few details. I apologize, I've kind of got the presentation set up to where we'll just present it en masse, and then we can have you look at the separate motions individually. So, once again, this is just a breakdown of the unit types and, and the associated parking, indicating the compliance with the parking, with one, one consideration that the council has discretion over. Here, we see there's multiple housing product types. We've got some single-family residential lots, detached product. We've got a back-to-back townhome product. We've got townhome product that is front-loaded, and then we've got some that's rear-loaded, and then there's stacked flat condominiums proposed. As you can see down on the bottom, they've then taken those uses, applied the 2.5 parking requirements to each, and indicated how many are required, how many are provided, and whatnot. There is an option that the city council recently approved in the city code, where some of the parking, so you can see the condominium, in this case, is deficient off-street, whereas some of these other uses, they're well over the parking requirement off-street. The code does allow for the city council and some... The code does allow for the city council in some circumstances to approve up to 20% of the parking to be on-street. And so if we go back to... Thought I had a slide attached, that one, I apologize. So, it's largely this area here, you can see there's a network of public streets, there's then some alleyways as well. The on-street parking would be parallel on these public streets here. And the applicant's gone as far as identifying where striping would go to maximize that parking and also make it very clear where it's appropriate to park and where it's not.
Brandon, how wide are those streets?
Finger Hut, where's my engineers in the room? Finger Hut is...
Probably too wide.
Seventy-seven feet? I'm looking past the roundabout, this, this section here. That's the 77, and then do we have the 60? Okay.
We wouldn't have people parking on Finger Hut Road, right?
We're not going to stripe it as no parking, it's more than adequate, well, I'll let the engineer answer. I, I believe it's adequate.
Okay.
Sorry. So in, in those areas highlighted and in the staff report, we've got the verbiage listed in there where it only applies to the R3 and R4 zones, those are the two primary zones that we have the ability for somebody to do stacked flats. And it is limited to no more than 20%. And so, if we go back to that breakdown, it's 20% of just the condominium parking, the rest of the uses are, exceed the minimum parking, and then they provide additional parking beyond what they need to, to reach our standard. Let's jump to the next slide. This is just a quick breakdown, we won't have to dwell on this one long, it, it shows eight total phases. We've got 579 total units, and this is kind of jumping into the, the plat details. Average for the total project is 9.8 units per acre. The R3, R3, excuse me, we allow up to 12 units to the acre, so they're well below that maximum. So the breakdown, we have 240 total condominium units, 175 rear and front-load townhomes, 140 back-to-back townhomes, and then 24 residential lots that would be overlooking the golf course. The eighth phase is that commercial corner. Let's jump back real fast. So this is the eighth phase right here, right adjacent to the trailhead improvements. And so this would be reserved and set aside for future C1 commercial type uses. One thing that the master plan development overlay does allow for an applicant to propose is potential modifications to setbacks. We appreciate the applicant working with staff to clarify and verify some of the requests. And so, this is an updated slide since we met with the planning commission. This kind of just breaks down what they're proposing as far as the setbacks, and this is detailed on the plat and would be in the development agreement as well. So here, this first column is the single-family attached, the townhome product. You can see there's no minimum lot area, lot width. We do have set widths though that are identified on the plat, and then the front setback, minimum 10 feet to living space and 20 feet to the garage. Part of their parking plan is providing a driveway. Each of the townhomes have two-car garage with the ability to park two cars on a driveway. And so that 20 feet is important to maintain so we don't have cars overhanging onto the sidewalk and whatnot. Minimum side setbacks, they've got proposed 10 feet between the buildings, and then on the sides 10 feet to any right-of-way property lines, and then also 10 feet on the rear. And then down here we've got the clarifications. For the multifamily buildings, no component will be within that 10 feet, so no porches, no overhangs, no extensions. Those will all be setback. We do have the single-family stacked in the middle column, that's the condominiums, 10 feet to living space, 20 to garage, 10 feet between the buildings, 10 feet on the rear. A lot of these are surrounded by open space, and so in many cases the setbacks are greater. But these are just minimum for a few of the buildings where they fit into the property. And then the single-family detached. The R3 does have a minimum of 6,000 square feet, minimum lot width, a few of them go down into the 40s. Most are well above these two numbers, and they do comply with the average lot sizes that we, we require by the code. 15 feet to porches and living space, 20 feet to garages, five feet on both sides, and then maintaining 25 feet on the rear. Any questions up to this point? Okay. This is an exhibit that the applicant put together, highlights the amenities that are proposed throughout the site. As you can see, we've got a dispersment of playgrounds, trails, other activities for the residents to enjoy. We've also highlighted there will be a trailhead parking lot so that outside users can come in and park or visit the area and park and, and enjoy the trails. We do have the main concentration of the amenities here around the clubhouse, pool, pickleball courts, playground, and whatnot. These last few slides highlight the types of housing product and where they're located in the property, and each corresponding slide will have a map that highlights those as well. So the pink you can see is the single-family detached product. The purple is the stacked flats. And then we have three different types of townhomes that are throughout the project. This is elevations for the stacked condominiums. So on one side you can see the walk-up, and then on the backside, on the alleyways you'll see the garages. And you can see the places that these will be located throughout the project are here and here. This is the front-loaded townhome product. So in this case they'll have the front driveways with the two-car garage, and then on the rear they'll have some private space to enjoy and whatnot. This right here is the rear-loaded townhome product, so you can see the, the front doors front onto the street. In the back we've got the garages and the driveways. This is a product type that I don't believe we have in Spanish Fork at the moment, it's called a back-to-back townhome. I'll let the applicant speak to what projects nearby that they have, then I don't know if you have them in Mapleton of this product, and so this, this will be interesting to see the demand for it on the market. So you basically have three stories for these townhomes, and garages on the first floor and living space above. And then we have, as mentioned previously, we've got a recommendation for you on the zone change and a recommendation on the preliminary plat. Keep in mind, these were as worded by the planning commission, and to their defense, it was before we had the end of the legislature and knew whether or not there would be funding put towards the intersection improvement. And so for instance, their, their single condition that they have listed there specifically deals with those improvements to the intersection at Highway, Highway 6 and 89, and so as the council deems necessary, you can modify it, strike it, leave it.
As staff, what is your recommendation on that finding, or in that condition at this point, with the funding now being available?
I think it's appropriate to still enter into a development agreement, and I, my understanding is that's well underway. I don't know that it necessarily needs to have as many milestones as maybe the planning commission and staff envisioned as far as potential caps and limitations on household rooftops and phases. I think we have a good idea in talking with Jared of when we'll have those funds, when we can get through the design and start the improvement. The idea is that we don't want too many residents to be relying only on the access through Finger Hut Road. That was the main concern. We've, we've got some plans in place as far as emergency access, such as day-to-day, and having adequate access is, is the main concern at this point.
And do we have ideas, or do we have verbiage of what those milestones look like? Because in what I see, I don't see any milestones here, it's just kind of vague.
We discussed it at the DRC, and I, I think the idea was to leave it open-ended and, and discuss it further.
The lack of, the possibility of funding certainly weighed over a lot of our discussions. I think whenever he's at a point that we want to jump into some of the, some of the engineering discussions, I think we can probably flesh some of that out for you there.
And maybe Seth before, I think we're about there.
Yeah.
A development agreement is necessary for this project to be approved for a few different reasons. So, the plan of attack relative to that, given that the applicant's attorney's been meeting with our legal folks now for the past couple of weeks, I think that agreement is basically ready as to form, to move forward. The approval of that agreement is a legislative act that the council will undertake, so we need to go through a public notice period, that does need to be presented to the planning commission for a recommendation, and then brought back to the city council. We anticipate taking it to the planning commission in their April meeting and bringing it to you in your second April meeting for consideration. So ultimately that will do a handful of things, including memorializing everything that Mr. Snyder's presented here relative to the details of the project. It also opens up the door for the project to be approved where it doesn't meet some very explicit requirements that we have in our zoning code. And I think to some degree, you know, whatever stipulations be considered for, you know, we've, we've used the word milestones, that could be articulated in the development, it should be in the development agreement, if there's anything that the council would like to see there. So, any direction that you give tonight, we can rope into that. I'm going to just speak for myself, given what Mr. Johnson has said, and given the nature of the funds that the legislature has provided, and with the understanding that those are going to be Spanish Forks to use to make this project happen. I appreciate that side of things, that the ball will be in our court, and I'm willing to bet on our folks that we can, we can move the ball and get the bridge constructed and that type of a thing. So I'm probably less concerned about milestones than certainly I was the last few days of the legislative session. There is an issue relative to second, relative to access and having a functional connection to GOMEX Road constructed very early on in the life of the project, we talked with the applicant about that, and I think we're on the same page. So take that for what it's worth, but...
Yeah, my, my question was more around the vagueness of it, and so the fact that there's a process of that, because we haven't had a lot of development agreements have to come through, so I think it's good to, to know that that has to go through that public hearing process, or that public process again through the planning commission and through here. So, thank you for answering that.
And I think, maybe to give you some color to the vagueness, when DRC reviewed this a couple of weeks ago, I think it was Wednesday of the legislative sessions last week, and we keep referencing that because there were some funds that were allocated for, for this second access. The, the second access has probably been the number one issue for the development since the concept was, was first even simply a, a dream, maybe two years ago. And we've gone through many, many iterations and, and landed on what I think all of us would agree is the better choice, this, this new access and bridge that crosses over Highway 6 and, and would create a new intersection with Highway 89. At that time, when we were meeting in this, in a couple of weeks ago, in my mind, what we were, when we used the word milestones, we were talking about having some amount of homes before funding is allocated, and some amount of homes before, you know, different things happen. The applicant's been very, very opposed to that in terms of having milestones that would limit the number of homes. Since we've received the funding and have understood, just as Dave said, and maybe Jared, you can speak about that if you're here in a second, my concerns about those very specific home-limiting milestones have been reduced as well. And, and knowing that we have a lot more control between the city and the applicant to take those funds and do the project eases a lot of my worries as well. So, I think, I think we can summarize a lot of what we thought should be the milestones now with probably the GOMEX Road being the first thing, which doesn't seem to be an issue that, that any of us are at odds with. And most everything else is a part of, has been resolved with what we've developed. Wider, some wider roads at Finger Hut and, and some light structures on Arrow, or on Powerhouse Road, right? And, and those, I think are a part of the development agreement as well. So I think with all of those as well, my, my concerns about milestones have been met.
Maybe two things just to finish with. One, I apologize looking at this slide, the planning commission did add a sixth condition to the plat. It is very vague, Councilman Carden, that the agreement between the city and developer on capping construction phases be tied to a second egress. And one thing, last thing that I'd add is, we do appreciate the applicant working with the city. Our codes are very clear as far as what our expectations are for access, we limit it to 50 if it's a single access. They have made improvements, or, excuse me, they have proposed improvements to Finger Hut Road, which in the meantime would allow for two lanes of traffic in both directions with the intent that if there was a temporary closure, you could use one half of the road or the other in addition to the emergency services access on GOMEX Road. I feel like I've thrown a mouthful at you, any questions at this point? I'd love to, if not, I'd love to invite the applicant up and we'll go from there.
Any questions for the end?
Oh, sorry Mayor.
Yes, yes, Councilman Marshall.
This is, this is going to be rough all night, I apologize. Just to one, just clarifying City Manager Perrin's comment about the money from the legislature to build a bridge for the second access, that's not actually accurate. The money is to build a pedestrian crossing over the tracks and under US 6 that would accommodate the second access. Fairly semantics, however important semantics.
Bridge over the railroad?
Yes, for pedestrian access that would accommodate a second access into this development.
So the road would be there is what you're saying Shane, but it's, the funding mechanism was for the trail?
Correct.
It's maybe the only time that a trail drives a road.
Hey, whatever it takes.
But, on our end as well, that is a huge deal, and it's certainly, I think, secondary to what these guys are talking about, but maybe it isn't, this is, there's a pretty cool zigzaggy trail in this as well, but this, that's a big deal. This is a statewide...
It sounds like semantics honestly, but it's really not. It is a very large deal, and I think that was the final nail in the coffin to get the funding, because you just can't cross those tracks anywhere. Well, you, at Center Street I guess you can if you wanted to go across 6, but that was the primary component of making this money happen with getting a great separated trail. So, we can't lose the fact that that's what a big chunk of this is for.
And, and the clarification for residents watching at home, this is a bridge over railroad tracks, not over Highway 6. This intersects with Highway 6, but goes over the railroad.
And this provides a connection to what Councilman Marshall's indicating, this provides a connection eventually to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, which eventually gets you all the way into Salt Lake, right? And, and maybe even to further points north, so that takes our little river trail to a statewide system, which is really cool.
Add some miles to it. See you around that.
We'll go run it, yeah.
We'll run it.
Thank you.
Thank you Brandon. Yeah, I'd like to, before we open up for public comment, if the applicant would like to speak any more to it, and then we'll open up for public comment and ask any further questions we have.
I will not say a whole lot, but I...
It's Shelley, your name, sorry.
John Bankhead with Best of Development. And we also have Steve Maddox with Edge, who will be the, the developer of the homes. Two years ago, we sat down here with half a million more square feet of industrial, and now we have what I consider one of the more successful... more successful, I guess pseudo-public-private partnerships. Ultimately, there's thirty-plus million dollars of roadway improvements going in here. It's going to be roughly a four-hundred-and-fifty million dollar value on this mixed-use project when we're complete, including the industrial and the revisions that we're making there. This is such a win for the trail system. We can all get skinny biking all the way to Bountiful and back. We have an enormous variety of housing at any number of price points. We're going to have a great neighborhood here. The, the park and the access now that we can have people, you know, be able to use the restroom park and get to the park in the trail system is great. There, there's just a lot of wins. And I, and I do want to take a moment to thank a couple of people specifically. Dave Anderson, who I met two years ago, sitting in his office, and he thought we were a bit crazy, and he's still correct. But he has been really a great advocate for moving this along in an appropriate way. I have to thank Jared, even though it's a wonderful crazy idea. He's the guy that said, why don't we cross the railroad? He had mentioned that before and I was like, there's no way in the bad place that happens. But that unlocked a whole lot. And, and the engineers and the staff and the fire marshal and everybody have been great. And I really appreciate the mayor, council members sitting through a lot of work sessions over the last two years, in individual meetings to provide us feedback. The state legislator and the folks we met with on the hill to make this happen. I mean, what a great win. And we feel really lucky to have a great project in a great city that solves a whole lot of regional issues. So, just wanted to say thanks for your, your patience over the last two years. And then any questions you may have.
Any questions for John right now?
I don't know.
Thank you, John. Would I entertain a motion to go to public hearing for item A?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
I'm assuming yes from Shane. We're in public hearing for item A. Anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak about the Whispering Pines Zone Change? Seeing not entertained a motion go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion. Thank you. Discussion back up here. Any questions for staff or the comment, or excuse me, or for the applicant?
Don't you think Whispering is a deceiving name when you like tornado pines or windy pines or something like that?
There'll be a lot of wind energy up there. It'll be the ultimate renewable and kite-flying location in America. So.
But no, all joking aside, garbage cans? We've had some complaints up in that area. How do you foresee taking care of that?
We have gone to great lengths with garbage cans, including detailed layouts of cars in garages, when, where those garbage cans go, detailed layouts of where on the street they go, and maintaining appropriate spacing. We've met with the garbage department. We have, yeah, no stone is, is unturned on this. So, that, that has been thoroughly analyzed.
Okay, thank you.
One question, I think came from what Councilman Cardon was alluding to, but you have Finger Hut Road now that's an access. Do you plan on, once an intersection is there that gets you to Highway Six, where's your truck traffic? And I appreciate probably you mentioning this, but maybe drawing attention to it. You are the owners of, of the industrial complex too. So, it's not like you guys can't marry this together, how the best way for your residents and the city and the safety of your residents that are going to live up there. Talk, talk through that a little bit.
Very much. So, first of all, in the short term, meaning until the Highway Eighty-Six Bridge is in, there will be a mixing and mingling of traffic. We don't think that's very long, because the homes are not going to come on tomorrow. And Jared's going to, you know, have that bridge done in, I don't know, twelve to thirteen weeks at least. No, but one, we have, if you look, the, the roadway has been designed with several wiggles, which are not currently on the Finger Hut Road. And we have the roundabout and divided median. So, several things have been done. One, to reduce the speed of all traffic going down that road. And two, particularly the, the semi-traffic in the short term will be slowed down, just because we would love that road to be signed at fifteen miles an hour. That's what it currently is. We will sign it whatever they ask, but overall, we want the speeds in this thing to be low. In the, as soon as the bridge is done, we will, we have two accesses. The primary one will be at the very top of the screen, where there will be a four-way intersection going over the railroad into the intersection. For all our truck traffic, that is going to be the quickest way in and out, and you'll have a fully signalized intersection. And so, we will do everything we can to move people through there. I don't know if we can legally tell them they can't go up Finger Hut, but the, the address and signing and everything we can do will be to move them through there. But I think just as a natural matter of driving, Finger Hut will not be pleasant for semi-traffic to kind of navigate. Just one data point on this, and we've tracked this now for two years pretty consistently. We have thirty to forty trucks going in and out of that building per week. And on, you know, so we are talking maybe ten to thirteen trucks at kind of a peak day. And that's, that's been pretty consistent over the last two years. We have security that signs them in and out. So, we have good data on that.
I want to maybe give some color to that. That's kind of a big number, a big deal number. It's not a big number. Twelve trucks a day, right? It's a pretty boring road to sit and count cars on, right? On average, one every other hour, right? And probably not all coming at midnight. So, maybe it's one an hour during the daylight hours maybe, right? But that's not very many trucks. So, I think that's an important data point. I think it's also important to stay, to indicate, that can change at any time, right? As, you know, they can change the use, they can change how it is. So, I, I think always from the staff's perspective, having that other access point really makes it so that the nature of, you know, the, the relationship rather, of the, the uses being so close together is much better with that second road. And I agree with John, with the applicant, that once that connection's in, the majority of trucks are going to want to go that way, because they don't want to, they don't want to intermingle with the neighborhood traffic.
We know how they like roundabouts.
Yeah. I love them.
Yeah. So, you know, in, in, in your motion tonight, we, we do hope to approve the project with the connection to Gomex Road and the things that are, have been discussed. And I think we're pretty far down the road with the development agreement, which you'll see. But I think that's been negotiated between the, the city attorney and the buyer's attorney. And we feel very confident that, you know, one, the traffic and safety issues in the short term are very well managed, and that hopefully in the not-too-distant future, that roadway is complete. For, for industrial owners, we want that bridge and we will continue to keep our foot on the gas as much as we can.
Jared, what in your summation, how long is it before that bridge is ready to go?
Will you turn on your mic there, Jared? It's behind your computer. Thanks.
Sorry. It'd take eighteen months to get through just UDOT structures, but with the railroad, it's probably going to take about eighteen months to two years just to get the approval.
So, we'd be under construction, let's say in about twenty-four months. And so, you'd have, you'd have it by the end of twenty-seven, first part of twenty-eight, somewhere in that timeframe.
When do you guys anticipate having houses complete? Not started, but complete?
Based on our current phasing estimates, we're probably four to five years.
Yeah. Cool.
Completed or started?
Completed.
The completed.
Development completed, but homes will be occupied.
Yes.
And, yeah.
Yes.
That's fine. I want to know when the whole thing was completed, when we have everybody in that, in houses. Because I think that's when those accesses become a lot more critical.
Anything else?
Jared, why don't you detail some of the things that, that they would, that we're looking in the development agreement that enable us to have the comfort level of access and to not have some of the milestones that, that I alluded to?
Okay. First off was getting the funding. And we have other fundings for the trail. And then this other funding we got from the state was to build that second access. The other thing we have in the development agreement is to actually have a fire apparatus road, a secondary access for emergency vehicles at all times. This access won't be used for local traffic unless there's an emergency and we have to use it. But they will use the existing Gomex Road as an emergency access with a crash gate on it that they can access if they need to. The second thing was to actually build two roads into the subdivision to the roundabout. And that would be so that we could actually, if there was a water main break or something happened on that road, we could direct traffic to one side or the other and still have two lanes open at all times. And then have a roundabout control the traffic. The roundabout also slows down the traffic and the trucks as they're coming down off the hill. The other is to have a high-T intersection at the intersection of Powerhouse Road and Finger Hut Road coordinated with the signal at US Six, so the trucks can't get stuck and all the blind spots are taken out. So, we've done a mix of, of having all the truck traffic and the, and the resident traffic, and taking every precaution we can and building them up front. And we feel that'll be safe for the interim. Like you say, eighteen months, they've got homes, they've got homes two years. They're going to share them accesses, but they're built almost twice as much of improvements built to them than we would in a normal situation. Does that sum that up right, John, do you think?
I think that is correct.
I think that's a good point. And this is coming from the guy that grew up here. Powerhouse Road, even though it's only twelve or so trucks, you know, a day, pretty, pretty boring. It's a tough, it's a tough spot, Powerhouse Road, and a lot of people that live down by the golf course coming up there and getting it going. So, I, I appreciate that point of that road being improved already.
It'll be signalized. So, the high-T, it would just like the US Six, the, if you're heading to the golf course, you won't stop. But all the other traffic will be controlled.
Okay. I do believe, one of, one of the wins here is regardless of what happens here, the bulk of the intersection failure happens in ten years due to nothing in Spanish Fork. You guys are kind of like Lehigh in the sense that a lot of traffic from Salem, Pace and Woodland Hills funnels through you, and you don't get to choose what it is. And so, as we studied with Consor, the, the engineer that, that Jared recommended and coordinated with UDOT, we realized that that intersection, Highway Six, is a lot more than just the trail. This, this really helps a much larger regional issue, because Powerhouse and Highway Six just functionally can't handle all that traffic. So, ultimately removing semi-traffic and getting other traffic through there solves a much larger regional problem.
Makes sense.
You're right. That is a problem. Stacy proposed a wall, but it failed. We're not building a wall. I, I know you, probably not, HOA? Are we, some of this is HOA, some of this is owned, owned stuff. I think snow removal up here is going to be pretty unique compared to other places of Spanish Fork, hence that some of it will blow away, some of it'll end up in our backyard down here in town. But when it gets icy, some of that's going to be tough up against some of the homes. Are we plowing roads and driveways, or driveways left up to the residents?
The, the roads are all public. And so, the, the network of roads you see is public. And, and I am not sure on the HOA and the, and how that is managed. That is beyond my...
Some of these places, some of your product in here will have an HOA that they...
There will be an HOA. It is all-for-sale product. The roadways are public. That was something, the city was pretty clear that they did not want private roadways. And so, those will be plowed with the city. And on, in terms of driveways and this and that, I don't know if that is individual owners or HOA. I'm, I'm just not, I do not know. So.
Sure.
Steve Maddox, Edge Homes. I'm John's assistant. And everything that is private will be HOA-maintained, both summer and winter. Trash will also be part of that. So, we will have an all-inclusive from single-family to condominium, HOA-approved. And everything will be controlled open-space-wise, and all of the trails and everything else will be all rolled up under the HOA. One other item that I wanted to address real quickly on stopgaps, I think there's a bigger concern from legal and probably from the city, that I actually deliver Finger Hut Road to the bridge. Because if I'm delayed and I'm stalled and I don't have the funds to create the road that connects, the bridge that Jared will be building will connect to dirt. So, our intention, as Jared eloquently addressed, is we have huge upfront costs on this project from offsites and then also Finger Hut building a quadruple road. So, our wish, desire financially is to be able to move at a pace that the market allows us to move at. And I think we actually drive the golden stake in close to the same time. Short of that, I think there's, there's going to be a gap, which means that you will be fighting traffic from other municipalities and our own. So, we really think in the development agreement, as you get hold of that, dissect that language that Paxton, my attorney, and your city attorney put together, because I think it's mutually beneficial, but holds us both to a calendar so that we deliver on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Any questions?
I'll make one last comment that I appreciate the, the attention to a trailhead here. I think this is a very popular spot up in this area, the dripping rock trail. I know we've discussed this at Nazium, but that is a huge benefit to our residents to be on that side of the, the river. And now this being on the other side and connecting it in and having more spots for, from some cars to park and access that area. It's going to be a big deal for that section of the trail. And, and so I appreciate that being incorporated, especially on that west side of your, west end of your development.
Thank you. That was actually your idea. So, we appreciate that.
That's why he's thinking about in a public meeting.
It was a backhand. We got it. But thank you.
I remember when we had the little road coming down that was going to cut through. Looks like we got a, did away with that, which I'm happy to see you guys worked through that. So.
That was Shane and Kevin. Now, this was, this was a community effort. We were not doing this all on our own. So, we appreciate the feedback. It's been really helpful to navigate. This is, this is a tough site. It's got a lot of potential, but it's got a lot of challenges.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If there's no other questions, we're on item A in the public hearing. We, we know we've had a lot of discussion about A and the new business section as well, kind of rolled up into it. But can we take these items separately and then, and then go from there?
Yeah, before we do, I also need to disclose that I work at Utah Valley Magazine and Edge Homes is a client.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Okay. If not, I entertain a motion for item A.
I move to approve Whispering Pines Zone Change. Be approved based on the following findings and subject to the following condition. First, the findings. We have, number one, that the proposal conforms to the city's general plan designation. Number two, that the proposal provides for a range of housing types within Spanish Fork City. Number three, that the residential development is more compatible with the golf course than industrial uses. And number four, that the phasing, that phasing, excuse me, that by phasing the development and providing needed access improvements, the proposal will have lessened impact on adjoining or nearby properties. Condition, that the applicant enters into a development agreement with Spanish Fork City, which includes language that provides for milestones for the road improvement for UDOT-approved intersection at Highway Six and Highway Eighty-Nine.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Did we want to change that condition to what we had talked about earlier? Seth, you had given some different verbiage in how you were seeing that development agreement.
Can we just end that condition after Spanish Fork City? Let the applicant enter into a development agreement with Spanish Fork City, period?
We, we still do need the development agreements, but it.
But not necessarily UDOT?
Probably doesn't tie to that.
Yep. Yep. I think that's a good place to end it.
Are you proposing a modification to his?
Yes, I'm proposing a modification to end it at Spanish Fork City. You okay with that?
Yep.
He accepted that friendly amendment.
Then I'll second it.
If you're listening at home. Okay. And then there's a second, well, you can't.
Or might not take the motion.
She's.
I'll second it.
Can I third it?
You can second it, Councilman Marshall. And Councilwoman Beck has thirded it. But now we're going to do a roll call vote. Any discuss, further discussion on the amendment? Okay. Roll call vote. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you. Item A is approved.
While, while we're on this, do you want to do the preliminary plat?
Yeah. Well, let's, let's, let's skip B on public hearing real quick and just go to the preliminary plat, nine A of, of new business. Is there anything else staff wanted to add to the preliminary plat, Dave?
No.
Anything Seth that you wanted to add to the plat discussion?
No, I don't think so. I, I think for us, it's probably most interested in any feedback you have for the variety, the style, and different things associated with what they've proposed. They've been working on this for a number of months and I think have been really responsive to the different conversations collectively that have been had. But I think any feedback you have for them, they would be very interested in.
I'm interested to see these back-to-back townhomes. I'm interested to see these back-to-back townhomes. They're different, but there's probably a need for them, it's just a different style, so.
I'll be honest, I don't understand what it is, so like, I need to see it too.
Make sure the walls are solid where cars are pulling into the walls together, so we don't step on the gas instead of, you know, I don't know.
Not just drywall, right?
My engineering background's giving you guys there. Yeah, no, I appreciate, I think the builder appears to be mobilized across the other way from this development already, so you're used to the area and know that it's really fun to work up there at seven in the morning and the wind, and ten at night, stuff like that, but...
Nothing blows around.
Nothing blows up there, but again...
Is it windy on the other side of the highway? Isn't that crazy?
Stops right there, doesn't it? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so bizarre.
Well, again, appreciate, I've said this to you guys, and this may be the opportunity to say it in the public, but truly, one of the gems up here in Spanish Fork, the views up there are incredible, and our river and our golf course are super important to us residents, and the feel, and the culture, and the character of our community, so, so yeah, build it like it looks, it looks awesome, thank you. I'd entertain a motion for Item 9A of new business.
I go ahead and move to approve the Whispering Pines preliminary plat be approved based on the following finding and subject to the following conditions. Number one, finding that the proposal conforms to the city's general plan designation and the conditions that the applicant meets the city's development and construction standards, zoning requirements, and other applicable city ordinances. Two, that the applicant address all red line review comments. Three, that the city council approves of the corresponding zone change request. Four, that the proposed setbacks be further discussed and finalized. Five, that the interior fencing and landscaping plans be further detailed and reviewed. And six, that an agreement between the city and developer on capping...
So, you wanna stop it there?
So, we don't wanna do six.
Well, you can just, that they enter into an agreement.
Okay, just that they enter into an agreement with the city and developer.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carden, a roll call vote here, Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
9A is approved in new business. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go backwards now to our other public hearing item. Item B is the ordinance for the River Run Griffiths Zone Change.
Apologize that you have to hear from me again.
No apology, Brandon, we like you here.
This is actually a really great project, and I don't wanna say it's the completion, but it is. The applicant is here tonight, appreciate him being here. Sorry, give me one second. This is a project that has actually changed hands, I don't remember what year Tyler's group took over.
Two years ago?
Two years ago, and they've been very focused and very aggressive in completing the previously approved phases, as well as these last few phases that we're gonna look at tonight, or excuse me, last phase. This is the area of note, earlier phases did complete, this isn't the best image, I apologize, did complete the extension of Volunteer Drive from Main Street into the project, and then this phase will complete Volunteer Drive to River Bottoms Road. I don't wanna underscore the importance of road connectivity. So, once again, we've got two separate motions, one that deals with the zone change, and the second that deals with the associated preliminary plat. This one's unique in the sense that we already have an approved project, they're looking to add additional acreage to the project, and some of it is property that they purchased here, this was the Griffiths property, and then this was a portion of the Peterson property that the earlier phases were approved on, that the applicant willingly held off while we waited for word on if the Griffiths property would be included to complete the project, which it has. This is just showing the existing zoning of the property. Currently, our rural residential and the applicant's looking to mirror the remainder of the project, which is the R3, and utilize the master plan development. This is the general plan, everything north of Volunteer Drive was anticipated to be in the higher-density residential designation, and then to the south where you have Annie's Acres, that changes, steps down in density. What we're looking at tonight is this highlighted portion, I don't know if you can see that in yellow, so the remainder of the project is approved, under construction, nearing completion, multiple different stages. I hope, I sometimes struggle to find time to get out of the office, but I hope you guys find time as well to go around the city. It's amazing how much has changed, and some of those changes are for the better. Some of the changes, we don't necessarily get positive feedback on everything, but we do try hard, and we appreciate your guys' efforts as well. So, once again, you can see completion of Volunteer Drive from this point to River Bottoms Road, there will be some intersection improvements here, and I appreciate the applicant and adjoining property owners getting together with city staff to talk about how that can be improved with the anticipated increase in traffic. Sorry, one thing to note, so with the zone change, they're looking to add fifty-seven additional units to the project, so you can see three condominium stacked flat buildings here, lining Volunteer Drive such as the earlier phase, and then additional townhome product. This is a slide highlighting the intersection improvements, this is the latest version that we received from engineering to add into the slides. Jared can cut me off if I get it wrong. The idea is it would function as a four-way stop. You can see all the stop bars, there would be some barriers here to help force it to align better, so it's not offset like it currently, currently is. Oh, sorry. And then highlighting the preliminary plat, once again, we're looking specifically at plat H, which is just this portion here, the rest of the phases are previously approved by the council, per the recommendations from the planning commission. Sorry, this is just an example of the building elevations, and your staff reported, provided their full product types and elevations, it's matching what they have under construction in the earlier phases. Appreciate the quality and the detail that the applicants put into it. So, once again, we have a motion for the preliminary plat, and then we have a separate motion for the zone change. Any questions for staff at this point?
Questions for Mr. Snyder, before we go to the applicant?
I think my only question, after listening to planning commission and about the road and that intersection, it sounds like you guys were going to work with them and get a lot of those concerns and issues worked out, has that been addressed enough, is there still more to go?
I'll let Diane Garcia speak for herself in the public comment.
Jared kinda reviews, maybe in-depth, some of those conversations and adjustments that have been made since that meeting.
We've made quite a few adjustments, I talked to Diane before this, and I think that we can work together to, she has some more proposed changes, which I don't see will be an issue. I did tell her this is conceptual design, we'll get our traffic engineer and design something that will meet the standard, and we could probably move that turning lane that she's concerned with close to her property more towards the intersection and help her with her access. So, I think those issues can be resolved at the final design, and we can take care of it, there shouldn't be any real impact on her, so.
Okay, so the planning commission didn't see this?
No, they seen something a lot different than this. We were actually shutting down Bradford Lane, she had some concerns about how she'd have to drive around, so we're gonna keep it open, and then this is an interim design until funding's available to take the road south, and as Annie's Acres develops, we will continue to build this road to the south.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, we may call you up for more questions after public hearing. If there's no other questions now, I'd entertain a motion for public hearing.
I move to go into public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Carden?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
I apologize, we do have the applicant here as well.
Oh, excuse me, yes, yeah, let's, we're in public hearing, but we'll give the applicant, have you come up first, thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can answer any questions, but...
Tell Shelley your name, sorry.
It's Tyler Heran.
Thank you, Tyler.
Tyler Heran with Keystone Construction. I really don't have a lot to add, I think Brandon did a good job. The one thing I'll say, and I promise this isn't just like trying to sweet-talk anybody, but I'm just very impressed with the staff here and how your city works. I would just say, like, this area, because of how oddly the roads were laid out a hundred years ago, and the parcels, how they were parceled off, it had the potential to just be a kind of funky-looking area, if it was all developed in a mishmash, like, some parcels weren't developed, the roads weren't thought out, but I think the staff coordinates really well with each other to where you end up with something that looks good and is developed kind of uniformly. I've seen other cities that they just aren't in that level of detail, and so, that's my one feedback, is it's impressive to see the process, and it's been about a year that we've been working on the alignment of everything here. One thing I would note is, we have our kind of regular civil engineer who designed our roads, but that intersection, I'm sure you've all driven down that road before, it is a crazy intersection, and so we actually hired like a special engineer to look at the whole area, and they went through several designs to come up with this one, that, you know, in the future, like what Jared said, when Annie's Acres develops, it'll be the safest intersection that we can, and in the meantime, I, you know, I get their art concerns, and so I think Jared's point is great, like, trying to address the concerns, but also do it in the safest way possible, so, yeah.
Any questions for Tyler?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler, appreciate it. Okay, we're in public hearing for this item, if anybody from the public would like to come up, please state your name and...
Diane Garcia, as you all know, my property is adjacent to this and is greatly affected by this intersection. First of all, I would like to thank Councilman Marshall for risking his life Saturday, walking this intersection, and spending time talking and looking at all the different options. That was the first time anyone from the city had spoken to me about that, to communicate any effect it had on me. So, that is stressful for me, that nobody considers or talks to the landowner that is affected the most. At the planning commission meeting, it was said that they were gonna cut off Bradford Lane, that wasn't in any of the packets or information ahead of time that I had read and studied and looked to see how it would affect me, and then they sprung that on me that night. The disturbing thing was that it was said, nothing's happening to the south, so we're gonna cut off that road, and that is access to my property that has been in my family since 1852, a hundred-year-old access, and it was referenced as nothing's happening down there, so let's cut off that road. So, I would admonish the city to be a little more courteous to landowners and to be more aware that even if it is an agricultural field, there is something happening there, and it is somebody's property. I did, this morning, speak with Byron, and we went over a bunch of stuff, and then right before this meeting, did speak with Jared, so that's the only opportunity I've had to discuss this intersection and how it affects me. As a few of you know, two of you know, that when Annie's Acres went in, it was required that they fix this intersection, and it diminished my access to my property, and so we discussed possibly restoring that access to that gate and giving me more of a shoulder, so it is a safety, so I can pull equipment off the road, instead of being on the road while I'm trying to turn into my own property. So, that was good. I was told that if I had not shown up to planning commission meeting, then nothing would have changed and it would have gone forward with cutting off Bradford Lane, so there's a few things that need to be fixed in communication. Also, we've discussed about the drainage and how this drainage goes up through this development. We have now got an official name for that drainage, and there's water rights to it, it's called the Mosquito Seepage Drainage Project. It was started in 1851, and it drains water off my property and it goes to Westfield Irrigation Company, so that needs to be considered and protected. And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackie Larson. So, about the water right that Diane has mentioned, I actually have this in the documentation here, so that there is a water right to Westfield Irrigation Company, which to the best of my knowledge, these properties in the area are drained by the seepage drains and the overflow ditches, and they were filed upon in 1938 and would be need to delivered, need to be delivered to the mill race canal. So, here's the court order for when it went through court, and then there's also some maps that might be helpful. Do you want me to give it to you, Jared? Thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. Thank you. Anyone else? Sing na na, entertain a motion, go out of public hearing.
Salute.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck?
Second.
Seconded, it's a tie, seconded by Councilman Carden. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing, discussion back up here. Questions, anybody for staff?
Yeah, I have, Jared, I have a couple of questions for you. So, with the water issue that was just brought up, that, when would that be done in this process? Obviously, we're here talking about a zone change, and then we have a preliminary plat, when would you address those drainage, I don't wanna say issues, but those problems potentially, and make sure that those are carried out correctly?
I'll look into them, but I don't believe that have any effect on this property to the north. Diane's property is to the south and to the east of this, and if it's draining through to the west into a ditch, I'd have to look into it, but we're not changing any of the drainage in the underground or mill race.
But that would happen at final plat approval, correct?
Mm-hmm. The only thing we put in is storm drain, which collects surface water.
Okay.
So, any of the underground water, any of the other ditches are either relocated or rerouted, but we do not change the irrigation's water.
For example, the mill race in this area is already piped, right?
Correct. I mean, it's piped from basically that intersection to the fairgrounds from here.
Fairgrounds, yeah.
So...
So, the mill race isn't open along the backside of those anymore.
Yeah, just in the bottom, it's, it closes, if you will, at the bottom of that triangle.
Right.
It goes underground.
I just wanna make sure I understood the timing of when that would happen, because obviously, there's a concern that we need to make sure that is addressed.
It wasn't brought to our attention until this morning, I was just handed the documents, so I'd have to look into, see exactly what it is first.
Right. But if it's, and maybe to that point, if the applicant is building on an area that has a ditch or anything that runs through it that delivers water to Westfield, Southfield, anywhere, any other irrigation company, yes, they understand that water can't be stopped all of a sudden, that oldest water, oldest laws in our state of living in a desert, is the water has to be delivered, and so it's still gotta run, even though it doesn't run through a ditch anymore, they got, they have water rights.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions about the zone change? We're kind of in the same, in the same kind of place with, we're looking at a plat, a small corner plat of a bigger development, but it's kind of all in the same...
I guess it's probably proper to thank Jared team and working with Diane and just different people in the area on trying to fix this intersection, it is a weird intersection, it's hard, but making sure that we get it right, right, as we move forward, and then as we make it better when Annie's Acres does finally develop and make it enter, so, thank you for, whether it was today or when it was, but we can, we can talk about that later, but at the same time, it's, you know, thank you for working through it.
Yeah, I think it's also worth noting, Councilman Carden, that staff reached out last week, connected by email, a couple of messages, a couple of other touches last week, of course, Councilman Marshall this weekend, and then yesterday and today, so...
Yeah, lots of...
I really, yeah, I really appreciate the staff being responsive and respectful, obviously. Being able to communicate, uh, requires the ability to connect on the other end, and, and people have lives, so that certainly understand that, but appreciate their efforts, being diligent and reaching out and communicating with, with those they were asked to do so.
You certainly shouldn't be lost on the, the idea of this area, you've got, you've got some pockets that are starting to come into Spanish Fork and annexed into your, into a city, and, and developed, and parts that are still, still in the county.
Yeah, for sure.
As well, and most of this following to the south.
County.
Yeah, yeah, and to the, to the east side of that road.
Yep.
County property, so, trying to get it right.
Yeah, narrow neck, right, the east side of this up to the top of the hill, so it's, you know, measuring distance-wise, it's probably, you know, no more than five hundred feet, give or take, but it's not a very wide, wide neck, so, yeah, but that area east of River Bottoms Road is, is actually in unincorporated Utah County.
Mayor, just.
Yes, Mr. Marshall, yep.
Um, I wanna thank the staff as well, they, they jumped on this pretty quick and, and came up with some good ideas. Jared's team did a great job, and, you know, thanks to, to Diane, and I think Jim, I miss Jim's last name when I was out there Saturday, but I think he's in the audience. Good education process, if you ever had a chance to go down and walk on River Bottoms Road, there's like four cars an hour down there on Saturday, um, so it's not really taking your life in your own hands just quite yet, um, but, um, it was really good. I, I would, I would offer that if other residents have, uh, issues they want us to see, give us a call, and we'll come out and take a look at it, 'cause it's very educational, and I appreciate the dialogue and, and the time spent there on Saturday, and I think we got to a spot where it is a better design than it was during planning and commission, and, and I think that's because, um, people listened, people gave their input, and things were made and changed, and it's better for it, so, thank everyone involved.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Any other questions or comments about item B? I, I think Councilwoman Beck brought it up, I would be remiss if I didn't say it, appreciate the, the DRC and the planning commission having a discussion about this area, and, uh, and kicking it back and forth too, and, 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 and input and insight for those bodies as well, to get it to this point too.
I think it's fair to say too, is, one of the things that kind of going along with what Shane was just talking about, and for what you're saying, is sometimes we don't know what we don't know until someone brings it to our attention, and so, always important to, to be a part of the voice, because we don't all drive the same roads, we're not all in the same places, so always let your voice be heard, please.
Yeah. Now, I did, I, this, I drove this road, this is, I rode my bike on this road, this is how I got from east side to west side, west side, east side.
Did you go, did you enter tube into the river up the stream, or downstream?
Your dad's the river commissioner, you, you, you never state what.
Okay.
Bodies of water you, you were in at any time, and so, oh. What is it, is it called pleading the fifth, is that what our legal, okay?
Plead the, plead the fifth, yep.
Yep, the fifth is what I'm gonna plead, if I was ever in.
Shane, we already know you were there.
I did not do that one.
All right. Any other questions or comments, uh, on this? If not, I would entertain a motion for item B.
I move to approve the River Run Griffith Zone Change based on the following findings, and subject to the following conditions. Findings that the proposal conforms to the city's general plan designation, and that the proposed zone district and overlay are consistent with surrounding developments. The conditions that the applicant meets with the city development and construction standards, zoning requirements, and other applicable city ordinances. Two, that the applicant address any red lines, and three, that the applicant meets any conditions of previous approvals and agreements.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. This is a roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item B is approved. Convenient that we're going to item B for new business right after this, for the preliminary plat. Is there anything, Dave or Seth, that needed to be discussed further about the plat? Nothing? Got it? Applicant, anything you wanna, okay? Entertain a motion, or questions or comments about the plat?
Just one quick comment, Mayor, but good. During the conversations with, with Diane and Jim, which he lives a bit further north of her, um, concerns about this roadway improvement getting on their property, and, and Jared did a great job talking me through this, this afternoon, um, this project is not to get on their property, not Diane's nor Jim's, um, so their property is being protected, and, yes, we're doing some work outside of it, and Jared's, um, um, already talked about trying to make sure that we get Diane's access taken care of, and so, I think, again, it's, it's, it goes back to good communication, and, and I think we got to a good result, but, you know, you put a, a drawing in front of somebody, it's very difficult to find exactly what's going on out there, and so, um, be, rest assured those two folks that this project is not getting on their property, and will be widening primarily to the west.
Good point, and it's hard to see on a map, but, uh, moving much to the west is tough, you're, you're, you are next to a, a couple hundred-year-old, uh, Mill Race Canal, named the Mill Race, 'cause it used to go to a mill and provide water, so, been there for a long time, and, and, uh, so you're, you're sandwiched a little bit in this area, for sure. But, uh, good point, do, do you need any condition, uh, added to this, any language with what you're working with Jared on designing that? Is it?
I think we can take care of it through final plat design.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna have to get the county's approval for anything that we do at the intersection, so, I have talked with Glenn Tanner about it, and he's happy with us improving it, making it safer, so he's really on board with making sure it improves safe, so I think we can take care of it with the final design.
Okay. Thank you for that. If there's any other questions or comments, uh, now, let's let him know, and if, if not, I'd entertain a motion for item B of new business.
I move to approve the River Run subdivision Griffith preliminary plat amendment based on the following findings, and subject to the following conditions. Finding that, one, that the proposal conforms to the city's general plan designation. Conditions that the, uh, applicant meet the city's development and construction standards, zoning requirements, and other applicable city ordinances. Two, the applicant address any red lines, and three, that the applicant, uh, meets any conditions of previous approvals and agreements, and four, that the pending River Run Griffith Zone Change be approved by, by the city council, which we already did, so.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, a roll call vote here, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item B is approved of new business.
I don't know if I like Shane's voice, it's like booming through the speakers every time he comes on.
Look, he's probably gonna want that kind of, kind of mic capability when he's even back here in person, isn't he?
I agree, yes.
Yeah, you want it.
I agree, yep.
Item C.
It's nine thirty here, so, you know, a few more hours, I'm done anyway, so you aren't gonna listen to me anymore, Jesse.
It doesn't look like an agenda with a few more hours, but we'll see. TerraCon contract deploy EPA Brownfields grant, Mr. David Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This service agreement is very similar to one that the council approved a few years ago, when Spanish Fork City was first awarded funds through this program that the EPA administers. In 2024, there were two communities in Utah that were awarded funds, Spanish Fork and Murray, total of a million dollars, half a million dollars are, uh, going to each of those two communities. The approval of this contract tonight lets us hire the qualified professional that we will use to do the work that the grant pays for. TerraCon's the name of the company, it's the same company we used, but the first round of grant funding, honestly, we couldn't be happier, Brandon's the one that's on the front end dealing with them most regularly, um, we're very excited to get back to work, again, with, this is a larger, um, award than what we initially received, that was $300,000, and we went through that money surprisingly fast, um, the, the first 300,000. Spanish Fork, um, it, you'd have to look around a little bit to see the history that exists of industrial uses and different things that can be a challenge when somebody wants to adapt a property for a new use, and there are things that have to be done by way of investigating those sites and studying them to make sure that proper plans are in place to make sure that they're ready and suitable for a new use, and that's exactly, those, those studies, investigations are really what, uh, these grant funds are for. Um, like I said, we're excited to get to work with this, um, I think some great work was done, uh, with the first round of funding that we received, I'll mention that there really aren't strings attached with this money, except that it does take some time on the part of our staff, again, in our office, it's Brandon that does the heavy lift, there are also some folks from accounting, uh, for example, Legal Department, appreciate them helping us get this ready for presentation tonight, um, and we were able with this second round of funding to earmark some money specifically to reimburse Spanish Fork for some of that staff time that, that, uh, the grant, or sorry, that the work consumes. So, uh, it's a great program, and we're excited to go again, and hope the council will approve the contract tonight.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave about these, this grant funding?
Good program.
Good program. I agree. I'd entertain a motion on item C if there's no questions or comments.
I move to approve the TerraCon Brownfield Assessment Grant Consultant Contract with any edits or revisions to be approved by the city's legal department.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilman Cardon, a roll call vote here, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
He, he got bounced out of the meeting for a few moments, so he, he didn't catch all of it, but, so, I, it's probably safe to just tell him what we just approved is that we're buying the house right next to him.
I read it.
And right behind him, and we're tearing his backyard up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's what he just approved it.
Your, your home, your home is, uh, yep, next to a big hole behind it now, is what it is. Okay, item D, ordinance for the municipal code, section fourteen, four, ten, appendix L, requirements for firefighter air replenishment systems.
Mayor, what, what would you think if, uh, we adjusted just for, uh, sake of some of them in the room?
Sure.
And had, uh, the riding club contract, got some of the public here, we could do that one, and then finish off with, uh.
We also have some of the firefighter people who.
They're on the clock.
And they've been here for hours!
It was Eddie's idea.
Oh, okay, if Eddie said it, it's okay then.
It's on him. Yep, we'll switch D and E, we'll go to E now for the Diamond Fork Riding Club rodeo contract.
Mr. Dale Robinson. We've got two chiefs in the room, once a chief, always a chief, is that the case?
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity. Um, I'm, I don't know, first off, if you guys received a staff report on this, I apologize if you did not.
They didn't, that's not your fault, that's my fault.
That's my fault. My fault first, I'll, I'll take the heat for that. Um, okay, so you have not received a staff report, um, so let me just briefly, um, uh, give you an overview of this contract, 'cause there's a lot of changes here from what we've normally done. Um, uh, we basically ran off of the same premise, the same base contract for the last forty years, since 1985. We've done some changes and updates to it, uh, over the years, um, but the, the rodeo committee felt like it was necessary to do an overhaul on the contract. Things have changed a lot in forty years on our rodeo, uh, so, uh, we felt like we needed to update this, this agreement. Um, so let me give you just a, a brief synopsis. First of all, I guess I need to, uh, recognize and thank, uh, Steve Adams, and, uh, who's the Diamond Fork Riding Club president, and Chris Ivy, who's the outgoing president. Uh, those two, along with Seth Perrins and Nick Hanks, have spent a lot of hours putting this together, so, uh, appreciate them, uh, and their efforts that's been put into this. Uh, so, um, let me just tell you the premise of the contract, so we've, we, it's, it's a four-year contract, this, it's automatically renewable, uh, for successive four-year periods, um, so that we don't have to redo this contract again. If everything's going okay, we're gonna, we've got a renewable clause in here, uh, there's also a termination clause for either party, as a standard contract would show, in case things aren't going well for either party, uh, and, and it's necessary to terminate. Um, but also, uh, we've written in here that, that, uh, and we've got to give notice by, I think, October fifteenth, what we put in there after the rodeo, uh, if, if we're going to terminate, but, um, our intent here, obviously, is to, to make sure that we, we, we work out any issues that we may have, uh, as the year goes on. We've written in there a clause that says this agreement may be reviewed after each rodeo, and changes may be proposed or made as necessary to satisfy, to the satisfaction of the rodeo committee. Um, and those changes will be made in writing, so that, that protects both parties. Um, the major changes of the contract, uh, are this, the city has been paying, uh, paying for all of these, these services, and so what we're proposing is that we pay, the city pay the Diamond Fork Riding Club a total of 74,500 dollars. It'll be paid in two different time periods, uh, fifty-four. Did somebody expire?
Hmm, he's still there.
Did we lose him?
Nope, still here.
The man behind the curtain is still there. Uh, 54,500 before March first, and this is to meet different obligations that they need to, uh, the riding club as the rodeo progresses. The other 20,000 will be paid before August first. Um, and they will use this money to pay for the following services, uh, that were previously paid by the city. Of course, they provide all the labor to produce the rodeo, um, and you can, you can find in the contract, that's spelled out very specifically, all of their duties and responsibilities and things that they will do to help produce the rodeo. Uh, all the hospitality that's provided, all the food, feeding the contestants and the workers and all that kind of stuff, um, the queen contest, which they're responsible for doing, uh, uh, any rodeo tickets for riding club members, uh, who work for the rodeo, and then all of the facility use that the club has used throughout the year. So, these are things that have been, been doing, have been done anyway, and, uh, and we're just, uh, putting them on the forefront and having, paying the riding club for those things, and have them in turn pay for those uses to make it, make it a little cleaner. Um, so that's it in a thirty-second nutshell, but we've got all kinds of experts here, if you have any detailed questions, uh, we can call once a chief, former a chief, Adams to the stand too, if we want to, if you want, if you feel you need to.
He loves public speaking.
He didn't look too excited about that.
We have three former riding club presidents back there, so.
We actually do.
Yeah, any of them.
Parker's here too, so we have all the, all the wisdom that you need right here for the rodeo. These guys have been involved for many, many years.
Do I have a question? You said it was you and Seth that decided that there needed to be a, a change? And then you just approached the riding club, and were they receptive?
That was a good question.
Or were they also agreeing, like, were they?
That's a good question. That really is, was a rodeo committee discussion.
Oh, okay.
Uh, which involves the riding club as well as members from the city, and so, uh, yeah, they, they have been involved from the get-go, um, and, and Steve's been very good to take this information to the riding club, so they've, they've been involved all along the way.
Oh, good.
Throughout the process. Yeah.
Yeah, we had a meeting, uh, with the riding club, I don't know, a couple months ago now, probably, uh, we walked through some of the tenants of the contract, I think we've changed, uh, certainly a lot of the detail about it, but, uh, from that meeting, good feedback, great discussion, uh, great excitement from, uh, from club members. Um, but in all candor, I think a lot of the, the beginning of the, the change probably comes from, from me in terms of looking at the contract and, and reviewing the contract. Uh, I think Kevin and Chris can remember from even four years ago, or whenever the current one that we're, that just ended, when we were talking about that one, we started with some of these concepts back then, I, just identifying that the contract hadn't changed in, in its form for forty years, and, um, and, uh, wanting to address at least some of the form and function of how that contract looks, so, yeah, that probably starts with me.
How many members are there in the riding club? Oh, wow.
Seventy.
How many you guys do?
Yes.
Makes this day look good.
Shelley, that was Steve Adams.
I think that number's important to put into context, that if you go, if you go to the, the, the contract and start adding up the, the people that are parking, and of course, some of them can be reused for, reused, that's not the right word.
Recycled.
Yeah, recycled, yeah. But some of them there are there to set up early, you know, and, and then they end up parking vehicles or taking tickets or whatever, but, 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 but boy, they're, just to the outside resident or, or rodeo fan that comes and buys a ticket and, and, and just enjoys the show, the work behind the scenes, rodeo committee, the, the, obviously the entertainment, the, the professionals that, that are there to, to entertain and everything, but the riding club for the work they do really behind the scenes that, that pull this off with, with the rodeo committee is, is something awesome to see, so.
For sure. And by the numbers, it's basically the entire rodeo, I mean, Diamond Fork Riding Club that's gonna help with the rodeo, so.
When Kevin and, and Steve and Chris, and they say, show up?
Yeah, that's the idea, right? I mean, that's the, that's the, the club's, certainly their main summer purpose, that main summer function is, is to work the rodeo. And I think as a rodeo committee, our hope is that every member of the riding club plays a, plays a role in some way or another. Obviously, not every person can do every job. We've got varying skills and abilities and, you know, looking back there at Kevin, you'll see a Kevin Parker type there at six o'clock in the morning making some breakfast and, and you'll see Kevin and Shar in the high chaperone, no, in the ponderosa, rather, until about 11 o'clock after the rodeo's done and, and then people all the way in between. So, you know, that old adage, many hands make work lighter. I wouldn't say in this case it makes it light, but hopefully it makes it a little lighter as, as a lot of people, a lot of people put in a lot of time during those, certainly during those five days. And, and then as those three back there know, as, as committee members, they put in a lot of time throughout the entire year.
I guess that's a good point. In, in a public setting, Seth, that I'd like to key in to is you have Kevin, you have Mrs. Parker there, and there's a lot of Diamond Fork members that have a Mrs. or, or significant other with them that are down there for five nights of a rodeo, but really weeks usually of, of being pretty intense down at the, the fairgrounds. And so to the spouses too, thank you for your, your volunteerism and being there and lifting and, or supporting in, in other ways while your, your other, your significant others helping. A lot of these people have full-time jobs and they, that's the time they take off of their employment to come, come help put on a great show in, in the city that they love and, and the rodeo that they love. So pretty cool thing to see and something to be proud of. So I'm excited to get a contract redone here that feels like it can, it can just roll into the next four years and four years after that and keep going. Anything else? Nobody wants to come up here from?
Come on, Steve, you're here, you might.
Yeah, we're here on a Tuesday night, yeah.
Oh, Chris too.
You go.
Especially when you can grow a mustache like that, you gotta get on camera.
You know, I didn't have much of a mustache when I was a cop. Well, I did for a while when I, I did some undercover stuff and I had long hair too at the time, believe that or not.
Whatever, whatever, you do not.
I had a mullet. I actually even have a fake ID with that picture on it somewhere. I don't know where. But, no, I, I want to start from the beginning of our club and just to say that, and you, and I know that you know the history, but perhaps the, all the Spanish Forks that are, that are watching at home don't, but, but in 1942, the local church leaders came to our, our club members at the time and said they needed to have a, a rodeo held here during the Fiesta Days rodeo, or Fiesta Days. And those men took that charge from, from the church leaders at the time back to the club members and had a, a few meetings beforehand and even pitched in some of their own money. Thirty, I think it was 30 bucks, $30 each to, to get things going. They went over to Provo and picked up some, some stands and hauled them over here back in 1942 from Provo to here. Were they gonna haul them on? I don't know.
How far that must have been back then?
You know, it must have been a couple horses and a hay wagon. No, not quite that.
And wasn't it, wasn't it the Black Hawk War days or something like that?
There was some Black Hawk terminology used back in the day, but then it ended up being called the Fiesta Days rodeo ever since then. But nevertheless, you know, they, they worked their, their, their heinies off and, and put on a good show and, and ever since then, it's, it's been a, a, a time that the Spanish Fork people and, and the surrounding neighbors could come in and enjoy a community event. It might be the, the biggest community event Spanish Fork holds, you know, with, especially with the stands, the stands that we have today. But it's been a, a great thing for our, our club and, and, and we honor those, those men that, that started it back in the day and grateful for the opportunity to keep it going. And 1985, as it indicates in the contract, is when we, we joined with the city. It was Diamond Fork Riding Club's rodeo up until then. And us being just volunteers, people paying out of our own pocket to get things going, we knew that we needed to have a financial sponsor, and that was the city. And the city came in, they, they took a hold of it, they became the, the one who held all the liability if things went wrong. If there was a rainstorm and nobody could come to the rodeo and the show went, went belly up, then, you know, it wouldn't be these guys that had blisters in, on their hands to also have an empty pocketbook. So it, it turned out to be a great relationship and over the years, many accolades have, have been given to the city and the, and the Fiesta Days rodeo and, and including the, the Diamond Fork Riding Club, who, who, as you've mentioned already, are, are the work behind the, the rodeo. We, we did have this contract, it, it has been going on in, in negotiations for a handful of months and we, we've been from A to Z on it and we're, we're backing, you know, and I, I gotta give credit to Seth, he, he did have that meeting with our club, had some personal conversations with, with some individuals. And I think that we're in, in probably the, a better spot than we were maybe halfway through. And I credit that to Seth and, and his ability to bring things around, so. I think we're gonna be okay. This, this is a new concept and like Dale mentioned, each year we'll review it at the end of the rodeo season and hopefully make changes, amendments to it if, if need be and, and make sure that all the parties are, are satisfied. You, Mayor, you mentioned a list of, of names or duties that are on there. That's not very much unlike what, what we do every year. We have a, we call it a pocket card that has all of our names on it, has all of our duties assigned. I think on, on that contract, I think that there's five guys on the hospitality that's, that's listed. It takes a lot more than five guys to do that. And so we have probably double that assigned. And so I think we're gonna be okay on, on the manpower and the needs and the, and the things, but those things that you see are actually minimums. They're not what, what we actually do. That's not to say that, that we might not stumble, we may not trip and, and may not have a conversation that something needs to improve. You know, we, we know we're not perfect and we know that we can always do better, but we'll do that and we'll, we'll try to, to get it to stay the, the way that it is. It's a fantastic rodeo, the best one in Utah, maybe in, in this western area, maybe from the Mississippi, I don't know, and not to many others, but I know that we get accolades even to the, to the point that we were nominated to Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame, first one in Utah to get that award. So we know we're doing the right things and we'll continue to try to do those things and, and knowing that, that we're not perfect and we can always improve on, on what we do and certainly welcome any constructive criticisms as we, as we continue with this partnership. So is that enough for you, Mayor?
That was great.
Steve, I do have a question for you. You said you had 78 people. What if more people want to join? Is this like a really exclusive club? Do you let new people in?
So by, by the state rules, you can have 50 active members. And so we have actually, right now, we have four, we have four shy of 58. And all, those above 50, above, four shy of 50. So the, the ones from 50 up to 78, those are honorary members, like myself, like Kevin Parker back here. We're honorary members, which means that we've, we've been in the club for 20 years already and we, we've served honorably, so they allow us to go honorary. And then it opens up a spot for under that, that 50 and under, that they can still join the club and, and join in some of the, the competitions throughout the year to, to do that. Some of us, even though we're honorary, will go back and do the competitions, but that's the, the idea. There's a rule that we can only have 50.
Interesting.
And, and you know, and like Seth said, that some of the, the guys that are older may not be able to do some of the things that, that we, we have. There's two guys right now that, they're, well, three in my mind right now, that, that their health may not make, let them do what they would like to do as far as helping with the rodeo. But we are encouraging them to, to come and wear our, our regalia, if you will, and be in the stands and, and share stories with people, what they, they might have to, to share with. You know, I think that it's fun to hear those stories if you haven't and it's, it's a good, it's a good experience to have, so.
Yeah, they, you may be wondering if, if somebody wants to help volunteer or join the club.
Yeah, I thought, like if people are listening and they thought, I, I'd love to join the club. Do you have to have a horse, a hat?
There is rules just like that. A horse, a hat, a horse trigger.
And it's a men's only club.
Yeah, and there's, we, we kinda partner, don't, not officially, but the saddle dusters within Spanish Fork, they're kind of, they're our women's club. We kinda partner with them. Some of our members are married to some of their members.
Oh.
And so, you know, it's, it's a his and hers.
Okay. No, that's what I was wondering, if someone wanted to join, if you're saying, hey, we could use more help?
So if you, if, if a person wants to join, they have to be sponsored by a member of the club. And so that helps to, to know the quality of a person, you know, if you, if you're sponsored by somebody. So buddy, if you, if you wanna get into the club, buddy up with one of us and so show us what you've got and we'll, we might give you a shot.
But also, Steve, Dale, Chris, and I, we, there are some things that we do that, that we need to have done about the rodeo, that some additional volunteers are helpful. And, and so we have some very specific assignments that, that require a little bit of expertise, some more than others, like some significant expertise. And, and we wouldn't have anybody, just anybody do those. But there might be some other tasks that we have. Last year, I think we, we grew our parking lot two years ago, three years ago, so we've added some parking help and, and so we, we put out an invitation for people to help. So if there are people that wanna help at the rodeo, there is, there are some jobs that we have that are outside of this contract, under the guidance of the rodeo committee, but outside of what the riding club is expected to do. And there are places for people to help, so we can, we can certainly have, have some, some good hands if they, if they are people that wanna help.
Tickets, tickets go on sale April 1st, 2nd.
Oh, yeah.
So just a plug for, for Fiesta Days rodeo. The tickets will be going on sale on April 2nd and that, there should be all sold out that week, I'm sure. And when they do, Seth is gonna be buying milkshakes.
There is a wager.
For who? All of us?
All of us that bet him.
So they think the rodeo will sell out in, what did we say, eight days? I can't remember now.
Whatever it is that we win.
Let's, let's say it was a week, whatever it was. They think it, every ticket will be sold out in a week. And I'm like, it won't be all sold out in a week. That's nuts. So the bet is, you guys know me, I bet milkshakes. The bet is, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I have to buy each of them a milkshake and of course...
And if we're wrong, we have to buy him a milkshake.
Yeah, and I said, but if I'm, if I'm right, then you all have to buy me a milkshake. And by that I meant you all individually. And they're like, yep, that's right. I'll pay one eighth, one eighth, one eighth. No, I get eight milkshakes.
This would probably be an appropriate time for me to just remind Seth and let everyone else know that we bet once and I won.
She did.
And I got the mil, he paid up.
He paid up.
Yeah. It was really nice, because it was a pyromusicale out on a 95-degree night, so.
I can't remember. Appreciate you, Chief, thank you. With, with Chris in the background too, and Chief, I don't know if you wanna speak to this e- either, but the, the two things that, one of them spelled out here in the contract, but the, the queen contest, that, that our, our patrons that come to the rodeo see, and I know Chris's been involved in that forever and had a couple daughters, queens before and everything else, but those, those girls that are, that are super talented and, and I know this is Councilman Took's wheelhouse and the Miss Spanish Fork stuff, but a comparable type of contest where queens from around the state compete to be Miss Fiesta Days, the rodeo queen of Fiesta Days, and just such a cool thing to see them and their talent around the arena and, and the flags and everything else. The Diamond Fork Riding Club administers that too, puts that on and, and that's no small feat either. The, the Little Buckaroo rodeo that, that they do throughout the winter, that a lot of people don't see, because that's the rodeo not outside, but, but it's held inside where they're keeping the next generation of, of, of rodeo contestants interested in it. And, and that's just a bunch of these guys taking their Saturdays and, and doing a rodeo for kids is so cool and, and fun to see, so thank you for that too. Some of those people have graduated to actually winning money in rodeos, right? Some of those kids.
Yes, yes, there are. And, and that's one of the things that we, we take a, a lot of hopefully righteous pride in, is trying to keep the cowboy way going with the youth within our, our area here. You know, we've had, I should expand that, it's not just Spanish Forks or Spring Villa Pace, and we've had from Idaho coming down and doing our Buckaroo rodeo. And so even, even the neighboring states have, have been coming and we have five, five rodeos in the winter. We call it our winter series Buckaroo rodeo. We started in 1989 and it's nearly 300 kids for five, five different Saturdays. And this last year, we gave away six saddles and 100 buckles and, and yeah, see some of these kids that sometimes it's, the buckle's bigger than their dinner plate. And it, it's a lot of fun. It's a, it's a great adventure. I'm gonna throw one more plug in, since we're talking about some of the other things that we do. One of the other things that, that is super neat that, that we do, I think it is, is, is our veterans' ride, our right of honor. And we do that, it's, it's coming up in May, I think, May the 12th, if I, if I have it in my mind right. But it's held down at the fairgrounds and we invite local veterans to come and, and ride their, a horse that maybe that they used to do when they were a kid, that, that they wanna try to do it again. And one story that, that always hits my heart is, I think it was two years ago, that, that a guy brought his brother and his brother had lost the, the use of his legs. I don't know if it was from age or if it's from, from the war, but nevertheless, he came in in a wheelchair. We got him on a, on a horse and his brother on the horse next to him and, and they were led around the, the indoor arena, which, you know, Nick takes a great, good care of and this is a great facility, but nevertheless, we were, we were able to, to give them that experience. And when he got off, you know, with tears in his eyes, he expressed his gratitude, saying that, that he hadn't done that since he was a youth with his brother and thought he'd never do it again and, you know, and, and things like that. You know, it's, it's an honor to be part of the club and honor to, to honor those veterans and to bring up the youth in, in the rodeo and the cowboy way and, and to, again, be part of the Fiesta Days. the Fiesta Days rodeo and Spanish Fork City's partner with the rodeo.
Awesome.
Well, can I make one more plug? We're going on and on, but I help a little bit with the rodeo queens just by interviewing them.
She helps a lot.
No, I don't. I interview them. It's so fun to be involved.
You make that a fun event.
Oh, well.
You're awesome.
Thank you. But I wanted to just say that that event will be on Saturday, April 5th, and applications are live on Spanishfork.gov. So anyone listening that is interested in applying for that, that is still available. When, how late can you apply for that, Chris? That week?
Probably that morning.
Tuesday before.
Tuesday before is the deadline. So that would be April 1st. So again, Saturday, April 5th for rodeo queen contest. And that's held at the fairgrounds.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Diamond Fork Riding Club. I would entertain a motion, if there's no other questions from the council, about the Diamond Fork Riding Club contract.
I'm not sure if I've got the wording right, but I'll go for it anyway. I approve this contract in front of us between Spanish Fork City and the Diamond Fork Riding Club.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Councilman Cardon. Was he trying to second? He's still there. Okay. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yee-haw!
I'm going to take that as a yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Tara.
It's getting late for him.
I don't mean he's approved. If there's any, anything else that needs to come before this body, do we have closed session?
Go back to D.
Oh, we do need to go back to D, sorry. Geez, I was about to make the other chief in the room. It's the fire side angry about being here all night. Mr. Perrins.
Thank you, Mayor. So what we have before you here is, you might recall about a year ago or so, we had some discussion here in a council meeting and approved what is called Appendix L, that added some language to our building code in Spanish Fork and required a system called firefighter air replenishment systems, or FARs. And at the time when this was approved, you might recall it, this FARs system provides air, air delivery system inside of structures. Most common FARs systems exist in the world today in large structures greater than five stories. So you might see them in high-rise buildings greater than five stories. As Spanish Fork has been developing our industrial area, a concern that has come before our Chief Hales and our Jason Turner, our Fire Marshal, has been the number of very large warehouses. Square footage wise, they are not, they're very large. Elevation wise, right, they don't have many stories, but they have a lot of square footage. And some of the buildings that we will start to see in our industrial area will be certainly north of two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, probably several that might be at or around a half a million square feet and maybe a few that are larger. We do have one building in Spanish Fork right now that is a million square feet. And to kind of wrap your head around what is a million square feet, for, let's see, a square, an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty? Forty-three thousand five hundred for sake of easy math. So to get to four hundred and thirty thousand square feet, that's going to be ten acres, right? All the buildings park is about ten acres, so that's about four hundred and thirty thousand square foot, but that whole park underneath one roof. Double the park, you'll get up close to nine hundred thousand square feet. So twenty, twenty-two acres or so is what a million square feet is. So as we've considered the growth of these large structures, of course, Chief Hales and Fire Marshal Turner have came to the council with Appendix L. Since we put Appendix L into place, we've had, I think, three businesses or three buildings consider coming to Spanish Fork and have reviewed and looked to implement the FARs system. I can't remember the sizes of all of them, but some of them, one of them was really large. They are no longer coming here. And then another one is about just maybe four hundred and fifty thousand square feet, maybe a little bit more than that. And then we've got one right now, I can't remember how large the one is in Caspi and Dave, the large building nine, is that two hundred and?
Six or four, yeah.
Four hundred. So a couple of less than five hundred thousand square feet. Every time that we've had discussions with these developers, the FARs system has been, one, a surprise, and two, there's been some sticker shop. The surprises come and the arguments that I think Fire Marshal Turner would express as he's listened to them, they all say, no, no, this belongs in only high-rise, upward, not outward. And Jason would quickly say, well, the code allows for it if it's square footage too, not just stories. But candidly, that is not something that developers see in many or many other places here in Utah or even in other places. And so that's been a big rub. And then as we've worked with them, we've worked with them to design the systems. So far, the lowest number I think I've heard in a structure is about six hundred thousand dollars, which is an added cost for the system. I don't know, Jason, have you heard of less than that? Is six hundred?
No. It's just important to keep the building safe.
Right, but I'm just saying the lowest number I think I've heard is that six.
Six hundred?
Yeah. And that's not a number that Jason or Eddie or I or anybody has really been excited about hearing. We want the safety, but we also want to try to find some economics. And so today, what we've been engaged in internally is some discussions about this. And so you've got a couple of things in front of you and one of them is an ordinance suggesting some changes. And I don't quite think we have the document there with Ordinance L, Appendix L Ordinance Modifications. I don't think that's got everything in it that we probably needed. But what I'd like to do is certainly have, if you have any questions you want to inject or if you have any questions about what it is we're talking about, I'd love to have some discussion with you. But we've got, and Fire Marshal Turner and our Chief Building Official, John Little, two experts on building codes and on fire codes and systems. And within those two also the ability to connect with others if we need to do and doing some research. So we've got this, we've got this Appendix L that exists on our, in our laws today. I'd like, I'd like to see, I'd like to consider some adjustments to it. I don't know exactly what those adjustments are. Chief Hales and I have talked about a few options and those might be exactly perfect, but they might also not be. And I don't want to talk about this every other, I don't want to talk about this every six months. I don't want to argue with everybody. I want us to have something that we all can connect into and believe in. And when a developer comes to us and says, you know, what is this? We've got really good plans, details and ideas from not only our staff, but perhaps even from some of the design community architects, et cetera. So there is a suggested ordinance in here, the ordinance that is suspending enforcement. The concept behind that would simply be to put some kind of a suspension, you might even call moratorium, on requiring the enforcement of this. I'm not suggesting as we consider this, so I want to make sure that we all understand here and perhaps for the record, with this, if we put this suspension in place, we're wanting to say to Jason right now, he doesn't have, let's say, the law today says a building two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. As Eddie and I were visiting, we talked about five hundred thousand square feet. Maybe that's the right number. Maybe it isn't, but let's, for purposes of this discussion, let's say this. I don't want a business to come in today, or next week, at three hundred thousand square feet and Jason required by law to say, you've got to start doing this, if we think it could change. At the same time, I don't want a business to come in next week and not have to do this because they snuck in under the moratorium. And so the language, and one of the things I think that can help us in this case is, there are two, usually two phases to a development in the large structure. The first one being the construction of the building and the second being what is called tenant improvements. Most of the time, I'm going to look to Dave or to Jason on this, most of the time, a large warehouse type structure is not going to have the tenant improvements right from the beginning. I'm sure that could happen. But most of the time, they're going to build the shell and then they're going to come back with what they call a tenant improvement, which is then where the walls go, where the offices go, where the bathrooms go, et cetera. And they call that a tenant improvement. We could catch anybody that comes in during this suspension of time, which shouldn't be very long, but we can catch anybody that comes in at the tenant improvement phase if they would be required to have a FARs system or some kind of system associated with whatever we do here. So with that kind of preamble and maybe with that kind of ramble, I'd like to certainly invite some discussion from you, some comments from community development staff and our fire staff about what it is we're looking to do. And then my solution would be to ask Jason and John, Fire Marshal Turner and Chief Building Official, John Little, to work together and review, as I said, these Appendix L, come back with recommendations and then present to you. The suspension, the language in the suspension ordinance says July 1st. That's Joshua Vaughn and I picking a round number out of a hat, basically. Fair enough, Joshua? So if Dave or Eddie or Jason have a different date that's better, let's use that date. I would also say I would expect it to be no later than. So if Jason and John do their work and have everything ready to present and they're ready to come back to you, a second council meeting in April, first council meeting in May, great. I don't, I'm not looking to push anything off. I just want to give us the time that we need to do the work, give us the freedom and flexibility to adjust things as we see fit and then put the new code, whatever that looks like, into place. Any questions from me before maybe they jump in?
Questions for the manager? Chief, Fire Marshal?
Eddie Hales, the Fire Chief, Spanish Fork Fire and EMS. Thanks for the opportunity to share my thoughts and maybe some reservations in what was just proposed to you from City Manager Perrins. First of all, the good Fire Marshal presented a year ago to our Development Review Committee on Appendix L. Appendix L was discussed at DRC twelve months ago and unanimously passed out of our Development Review Committee as a good policy to move forward to City Council. Eleven months ago, our good Fire Marshal and myself presented the Fire Air Replenishing System Appendix Language that was adopted, that was presented to DRC to bring forth as language to be adopted by council as part of our code. And we feel like that language was very in line with the hundreds of hours that have been put into the research, becoming more knowledgeable by going to, sending our Fire Marshal to Boise, multiple conversations with the firefighter air coalition that has put numerous hours and money into the development of firefighter air replenishing systems across the country and in fact then pushed it to be placed into the international fire code, of which we've adopted as a city as an appendix. Title 15A, the Fire Code Act of the State of Utah indicates that any municipality and county has the right to adopt any appendix within the international fire code. HB 368 Land Use Amendments, which was just passed by our good legislation this year, also reiterates the fact that appendices of the international fire code can be adopted by local municipalities and local counties. Spanish Fork City in the past has already adopted amongst Appendix L, appendices B, C, D, and N. So we have already enacted the use of Fire Code Act of the State of Utah to adopt those appendices and they're currently being enforced. I want to go back to large warehouses. Large warehouses in 2015 were not a part of the 2015 design for firefighter air replenishing systems. Firefighter air replenishing systems were initially designed for buildings over five stories in height for high-rise buildings so that firefighters can go above the fifth floor and instead of using bottle brigades and shuttling multiple bottles to the top floors to replenish the air of firefighters so that they can continue in their efforts to the above floors, putting these firefighter stand, air replenishing stand pipes in the stairwells where a firefighter can use the rapid intervention connections on their air packs to quickly stick onto their bottle and in under two minutes, fill their bottle back to full and continue on their efforts. Those are proven to be very successful in high-rise buildings. Therefore, those firefighter air replenishing systems were then introduced into the large warehouse environment because we talk about a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot building is four point three football fields. I like to think of it in football field's length. A five hundred thousand square foot building puts you at eight point six football fields, which is equivalent to one acre. So about eight point six acres if we're close there. And so if you can picture in your mind a four acre wildland fire inside of a four acre building that's full of multiple plastics, carpets, TVs, whatever the consumer has inside of those warehouses, which you know consists of large products that produce IDLH atmospheres as well as combustible flammables that are super, produce super high BTUs to create and expand quick moving fires. I just want to go into some details and maybe some statistics. According to NFPA, United States Fire Departments responded to an average of fifteen hundred warehouse fires annually, which estimated three hundred and twenty-three million dollars in just property damage a year to those facilities. Those facilities had an economic impact as well because of the loss that they had. The financial impact of a fire in a warehouse differs depending on what types of goods are in there, whether they're pharmaceuticals, whether it's an Amazon with multiple different types of products in there. Those buildings also staff multiple employees as well to run those facilities and puts them out of work as well. So past incidents recently have shown that fire consuming an entire high piled storage warehouse of two hundred and fifty thousand square foot or greater was a hundred million dollars in economic loss for those warehouses. And some of those warehouses produce long shutdown periods to rebuild, to recuperate insurance costs for the products that were in them, and some of them never recovered due to the catastrophic losses that they had inside of those. The priorities of the fire service are to protect life safety and life safety meaning the public that works inside those buildings, that visit those buildings, and also the safety of firefighters. The second priority of the fire service is incident stabilization, to take action to prevent the situation from escalating further, to suppress a fire, to contain hazardous materials or to secure collapse of structures. And then the third is property conservation, to preserve property that may surround those buildings or adjacent, maybe separation walls within those buildings to prevent it from expanding and growing greater. Putting these firefighter air replenishing systems in a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot building may seem strict to some developers. However, when you think of a four acre warehouse with open square foot, no way to prevent fire progression and firefighters working on air bottles that will only last them fifteen minutes, to make entry and dragging a hose line in dark conditions, to try to stretch to the seat of a fire that may be being contained by a fire suppression system that's already required in these buildings, to get in there and attack. required in these buildings, to get in there and attack it quickly so that that fire does not continue to have a conflagration event and move from one pile of storage to the next pile of storage to the next pile of storage, to continue their efforts to have these systems inside of their warehouse that we can quickly connect into and continue to march further and further into this building so that we can knock that fire down and suppress it before it becomes a complete structure fire and a complete loss with huge economic impact to not only the building owner, the tenant, but to the city itself from losing high-valued businesses in our, in our city. I would just ask, as a council, that you understand that the work of our good Fire Marshal, over 100 hours, that he's put into the, to the understanding and the knowledge of the firefighter air replenishing system Appendix L, 15 hours of my time that I've spent just in this last week, and multiple hours over the weekend, and then over 30 hours prior to that, a year ago, to try to get this language adopted with our work in collaboration with the firefighter air coalition, as well as other Fire Marshals locally here in Utah. Layton City, Wasatch Fire District, American Fork City, Draper City, Sandy City, and Spanish Fork City have adopted Appendix L in their communities. Each one of them have different parameters, but the parameter of 250,000 square foot is a parameter I stand by, but it is also a parameter that I would be willing to adjust to 500,000 square foot. It would be uncomfortable for me to do so, but willing to do that to allow developers to, to bring their business in here if it's, if it is such a high stipulation that they feel would deter them from building here in our city. At the end of the day, Council and Mayor, my job is to protect the citizens of Spanish Fork and the firefighters that serve the citizens of Spanish Fork. This air replenishing system that we're asking to continue to be in this ordinance of the city is one that I stand by and support, and ask for your support as well in allowing us to work to get some language to be placed in there that might be a little bit cleaner for some of our developers to adjust to. My reservation to suspend is just what City Manager Parents indicated, is someone sneaking in underneath that. I've seen moratoriums in my past experience in the Fire Marshal's office and another employer where a moratorium or a suspension to something has allowed somebody to slip underneath and through the crack, which has impacted future potential for enforcement to other businesses or building developers coming into the community. So today, whatever decision you make, whether it's to suspend, continue to utilize the language until we can, that's currently in the code, to continue to enforce that today until we can come up with a better solution, or eliminate Appendix L altogether, I want you to know that as the Fire Chief, that we will continue to provide a high level of service from our Fire and EMS agencies to the systems of Spanish Fork regardless to the decisions that is made today. I also assure you that I will work diligently with our good Fire Marshal and our Community Development Director and Building Official to come up with a solution that is better formulated to allow development to continue to come to our city, but also with parameters to protect the firefighters that are going to serve this community well after that I'm, I'm the Fire Chief here. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Chief, before you step down, you, there was, there was a couple of things you said there. Your recommendation is to, can you just give me, like, what was your recommendation? Cause you gave a recommendation, but I just wanna make sure I understood it completely.
Yeah, if I can speak from, from my own voice, my recommendation was to continue to keep the language we currently have and move forward with some new language to be placed so that we don't have anybody slip through the crack during the moratorium period. At least we have a standard that we're, we're working off of that was already approved by DRC, that was already approved by the City Council unanimously, and then come up with another plan with some cleaner language to amend what we currently have with the efforts of our Fire Marshal and our Building Official.
Making sure I hear you correctly. So your recommendation is to keep the language as it is today and then work to change the language?
That would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
And I don't know who this question would go to, but I'm, I'm sure it was said, and I just need to be reminded. Are the developers not loving this idea because of the expense? And like, what was that expense? I know someone threw it out.
Yeah, so the current expense that the, one of the developers that is currently experiencing, based on information that we gave them, on the, our side of the research that the Fire Marshal did for them, was $600,000. So to put a, a system of this kind into their building that's 250,000 square foot, it would be $600,000.
Okay.
And really, the, the hard part is, is that there's very few people that are installing these systems in the state of Utah, which then that drives up the cost. And so with future expansion and future growth, with the more contractors putting these systems in, we hope that that cost will drive down. At the end of the day, I had no idea what these costs were, right? It was ultimately a decision to stay ahead of the game and to protect our firefighters, regardless of the cost that it would have and the impact it would have on some developers.
And he has a building that's 250,000 square feet?
He has a building that's gonna be 440,000 square foot, I believe.
And it would cost 600,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Chief, quick question. So City Manager Parents said, I just wanna make sure I understood correctly, that we've lost three opportunities for developments because of this expense, what it would cost to put it into these larger buildings, right? Unless...
I don't wanna speak for him, but I don't believe that it was due to the firefighter air replenishing system.
Yeah, that, that is not what I meant, sorry. There was one building, the, probably the first one that came in, we don't know why we lost that. It was the third time that we had flirted with that particular business, and the third time that they had left us. So no, not because of the system.
So, I have a question about this document that's in front of me. It has some language in here, after discussing with Sean and Adam, who I don't know who those are.
That's a little rough.
And then, there's some red lines there. Are we wanting that? No, we're just like, okay?
No, I, I don't think we have language today that I'm comfortable putting in front of you in terms of new language. And so I, I don't, I don't really care the mechanism that we give our people the ability to move forward. What I don't want is to, to ask Jason to say, do something that you can't. So if, if a business comes in and Jason says, well, we're, we're looking to change it so you don't, don't worry about it right now, I don't think we've got language in the code that lets us do that. And so I also don't want somebody to put something into their plans, design it, that three weeks or a month later, a new standard, whatever that is, may change and allow for them to, to do something different. So that, in my mind, that's why the, the moratorium would be there. I, again, I'm, I'm not worried about missing somebody because we have the TI side of it. But if there's a way to give, you know, adjust the ordinance right now and, and give Jason flexibility, I'm fine with that too. I just don't want, if we're gonna make a change, and if it's a substantive change, like from 250 to 500, for example, then somebody that comes in next week with a 300,000 square foot building, I don't want them to spend money on, on a system that eventually we're gonna change. So I, I wanna give Jason the ability to not be working around the law. I don't, I don't think that's a comfortable space for him, if you wanna give him that comfort, and we can give something within the ordinance today. So we, we've noticed this, so we can, we can write an ordinance right now. If we wanna adjust the suspension language, I'm fine with that, but again, I'm, I'm not worried about missing somebody because we'll, we'll have the TI side.
I think in whatever we do, like in, again, in this letter, maybe this letter wasn't intended for all of this, but there's...
It came from a Google Doc, so in the time that I think we started working on it, it was done, and then by the time it got PDFed, there had been some conversations that, that got into there.
Cause there's definitely some things in here that bring into question, like the effectiveness, right, of the system and some different things like that, I think that we're gonna have to address at this point.
That needs to be, you don't have language in front of you to change to.
Okay.
That, that you don't have, unfortunately.
Got it.
Speak more about the TIs. Did, did TIs inside of a building break it up for our current code to be able to say, okay, the 250 is now broken up into five 50,000 square foot sections? Is...
And I have to apologize too, I, I don't know, that document they got in front of you, it shouldn't have been there.
It's a, it's a Google Docs issue, I'm sorry.
So, the new, the new language that would be proposed would allow a developer to have a couple of different options, right? And, and this discussion has already been occurring between our Building Official and our Fire Marshal. It would create the ability for a building to have 500,000 square foot of open space, and they could make a decision, do we divide this building up with a firewall? Which a firewall is a wall that would create a separation so that you had ability to protect it from moving down the line into the larger scope of the entire building without putting a FAR system in. So giving them, you can build a 500,000 square foot building, however, a firewall or a FAR system is required. So at some point, you need to put in a firewall, and if you choose not to because you want to have this big wide-open area, then the FAR system would be required. So that's where we wanna get to, to allow a developer that opportunity. As far as the questions on the bottom of that, Jesse, I have rebuttal to every one of those. And I think that we would be able to go a few hours on those. But that was the architect sharing his thoughts and opinions, and so...
It's good to know contextually where that's coming from.
Yes. So the, the, the hope is to get to the point where we, we can allow an option to our, our buildings to say, put a firewall separation in, or if you choose not to, here's a FAR system. And we all know that based on $600,000 amount that's been given, and in the knowledge of the construction world that I know, a firewall's a lot, gonna be a lot cheaper amendment for them to put that in versus a FAR system, so...
And maybe while you're up here, Chief, you brought up, you named a lot more cities than Layton, but I don't know why Layton stuck out to me, but, but Layton and some other cities, are they more of the 250,000 square foot building with FARs or 500,000 square foot building?
They're more aligned with a 500,000 square foot building.
Okay.
American Fork was one of the other ones, right?
AF. Why did he bring it?
American Fork, so Draper City, American Fork and Sandy City, they've adopted Appendix L in its entirety without any parameters. So there's, just, basically the Fire Code Official and the Building Code Official decide what those parameters are at the time of construction.
Gotcha.
So we at least have language in there today that gives the parameters of what we expect that to fall within, whereas those three cities specifically do not have any parameters, they've just adopted Appendix L in its entirety.
That doesn't have square footage, Appendix L doesn't?
It has elevation for floor height. It does not have with horizontal, what I call a horizontal high-rise.
Yeah. Could we, could we not just put in language to keep it as it is and say unless they wanna, or, or another option would be to put in a firewall, and then leave it at that while they continue to work on language?
You can probably do whatever you would like. It's your ordinance.
Hey, I like when you give me that kind of authority.
Um, I, I'm, this is Seth's opinion, I'm really not, I don't really love changing to change to change again, and so I, I, I don't love that idea. I would rather give Jason the flexibility to do what he needs to, to do something to say, just wait a little bit, or here, I think, is some workarounds or whatever. I, I, I don't think this change will take that long, so, you know, I'm not...
But it may be in that same breath and not to push back too hard is, if it's not gonna take too long, then why don't we just wait to do anything? Do we have somebody that's knocking on the door that needs it tomorrow?
Uh, we do have, I think we do have some, uh, we do have the one we've been talking about that is looking to construct right now, yeah.
And they've been through the process far enough that they would be ready to go before July or June?
I think they're looking for a building permit in a couple of weeks, April 1st.
But there's nothing we're gonna approve tonight to affect their decision anyway, right? Cause we're not ready.
Well, you could, with the options that were given out of, of suspending, suspending the appendix altogether, changing, you know, changing the, the language.
Which Chief didn't love, the idea of suspending.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're in a great spot, aren't you? You got your City Manager saying one thing and your Fire Chief saying another. Eddie and I love each other just like we do, did yesterday and we do tomorrow, so don't worry about that. The question is, I think, a matter of law, and I'd probably look over to Joshua to say, Joshua, what would you recommend to ensure that if, if the applicant comes to us tomorrow with their building permit and they don't have, they don't have the FAR system in there, and Jason, under certain circumstances, Jason could go to them and say, hey, you gotta do this. Jason probably wouldn't because he's here tonight and he understands that he's working on this possible change, whatever that may be. Does he have the authority to do that? And if, if Josh was fine with him not enforcing that the way that the code says that he might have to, I'm fine with it. But if Joshua, if the attorneys aren't, I don't wanna put Jason or the city into a different, into an awkward place with the law because we're not enforcing something that we...
Joshua, I have another one for you. What if we were to say...
You didn't even answer my question.
I don't, I, I don't know, I like it. I'm just kidding. I just, I wanna add maybe some more of what you're saying, but maybe in a different way. What if we were to say, we are putting that, we're doing the moratorium on L, however, any building permit issued from today until that new language is put into place will be retro-checked to fit that code?
I don't know that you can do that.
So the way that you would do that instead is just put a moratorium on those buildings, right? Anything above a certain amount, you just say, we're not gonna issue a building permit for any building above a certain, they can proceed as-is under the code, and enforcing it, I would never encourage anyone not to enforce the law as written, I guess is what I'd say. I think that's sort of our policy, the way that we've handled that, from my understanding. But if you want to impose a different type of moratorium instead of suspending the law, you could suspend all building permits of, for any kind of approval, sorry, for any kind of building in a certain criteria that obviously is going to disrupt what this person's doing, but then at least they're getting clarity at the point that they're getting clarity. If they wanna proceed, if they would prefer not to wait, I guess, then, then you gotta deal with the law as whatever it might be at the time. So Seth's, and the way that we've written that ordinance is that it would be a moratorium on enforcing of that Appendix L, and so those people would come in and there's no way necessarily to retroactively apply it. I agree with Seth there. The only way is that when it comes time to apply it is that it comes in at tenant improvements like he suggested, so...
So then, according to Chief Hell's concern, it could be very, a very reality at that point because there could be an opportunity where somebody could skip through and not have this system or the safety put in place?
I guess, in, in theory, that's possible. I don't see it that way based off of that requirement. I, I agree with the Seth's position, the way that we've talked about it with Vaughn and I and Seth before, is that if you do this kind of suspension and there's still a building permit that gets approved for this type of a building, and then we decide that, so that they don't have to put in the FAR system initially, but then we decide that the FAR system does still apply to them, that there's a way to require that at the time of tenant improvements, so they'd still have to do it.
So, trying to think of a building right now that might be relative, you've got down by, in the Canyon Creek area where Wingnuts is going in. It's brand new, people are kinda excited about Wingnuts. The construction was for the shell, and, and it built the outside and, and some of the internal walls, but the majority of the internal work will happen next when so-and-so contract... But the majority of the internal work will happen next when so-and-so contracts for the space, whoever they are. So Wingnuts, they contracted for 5,000 square feet, and so they went this far. But the shell was 15,000 square feet, right? And so that tenant improvement then comes along and we have that, we have that building permit that we can work with the tenants on if they, if they need to fall within whatever the policy or, sorry, the law is that we, we write.
Is every building out in the industrial park going to use that same type of philosophy?
I can't say everyone, but I imagine they will because we just have shells with the, the building permits, right? So thinking of, say, the Coleman Building, and I'll look at Dave and Jason in terms of the Coleman Building that went in, one of the Coleman Buildings that hap, that went in by, by I-15, does that have a shell and then a TI later? Is that how it went in? Is that how you remember that, Jason? For the Coleman?
The ones that are across from the jail.
Yeah, east of the jail.
Yeah, like right now, that one of those buildings is 250,000 square feet, it's been there for three years. There's a TI right now.
Yeah.
Bathroom is locked.
Yeah.
They would still, under, prior to the code being adopted, would be required to put this system in because of their space, they don't have firewalls to break it up, plus then that 250,000 square feet.
Should probably make Jason come up here, but the answer that I think to the question was yes. You know, there's the TI there. This one is one, I think he gives a really good example of how you can't claw back in time, three years, and say, let's do it this way or that way. But we have the TI. Again, I, I just want to give the clarity to Jason, I want him, I want him to be acting within the color of the law, so I don't, I'm uncomfortable outside of that.
Just one addition to the, going to a tenant improvement, improvement on the FAR system is, these systems are, the piping is run under the concrete. So by adding it after the building's built, you're adding an additional about $200,000 to the tenant to add this system after the building's built. These buildings are slab-on-grade, and these piping systems run underneath the ground to protect the, the breathing air from heating up if a fire was to be inside that building. And so the cost to the tenant then, and not the developer or the builder, then goes up about $200,000.
As I'm trying to take notes and read through here, for the options, it, it sounds like chief doesn't, doesn't love from 250 to 500, but, but not loving it is maybe living with it. And, and I think some more research, again, my opinion, some more research on answering some of these questions and debating them and, and getting the facts into it, make me feel like that might be a decent change in the interim to, if, if, if we're not, if we're not suspending this until we can, you know, suspending this appendix until we can get more detail where we're comfortable with it, at least moving that to where it's more in line with, with what some other places are. That way, it still gives our fire marshal the ability to say, this is what it is, and, and, and I don't know, move forward in some, some ways with, with a direction that we've, that we could possibly get to in the end, instead of changing, 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 right?
And I think that if we're going to make, in my opinion, if we make that change, the 500,000, and adding the option of a firewall, I think would be, I, I don't know the verbiage, and I, obviously, we don't have anything complete, but I think those two together, I think gives them at least enough to go on for today, what sounds like our fire marshal, I mean, our fire chief and our fire marshal are okay with, then we can figure out some of these other issues that are there. That's my...
What does the manager feel about that?
Joshua can, or Dave, pending ordinance doctrine, I don't know if that's the right term, but I feel like I've heard you and Vaughn ban, kick around that if we get a motion from these guys to say, do this, we have the ability to do something. Is that something I can employ here?
Yeah, I think typically for that to really be bulletproof, it'd be an agended proposal. I think this is an agenda discussion.
No, this is a, I mean, this is a new business item.
Yeah. And I don't mean to make it more complicated than it needs to be. First of all, I don't think anybody would challenge it. So, yeah, I think it'd be a very solid approach to say that taking action tonight with the idea that there's going to be a subsequent proposal made to, to some degree, ratify what the council directs us to do tonight.
Sorry, to be clear, I think that ordinance applies to a request or an application, right? So that doctrine applies to, so if someone makes a request and there's a pending ordinance, then you have the ability to say, you have to wait because we're in the middle of an ordinance.
Yeah, I'm thinking about zone changes and things like that, too, probably, or general plan changes.
So I'm not sure that's the, this thing here.
You're saying we can't?
I was thrown.
And we can't change that ordinance tonight?
I, you can change the ordinance tonight, it's, it's, what's the word I'm looking for? It's advertised, noticed, and you've got a template, and you've got a really smart wordsmith right over there, that if you say, let's change the ordinance to this, you can change it. I don't know what you want to change.
I don't know where everyone else is at, I'm, I've obviously been pretty vocal, so...
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm, I guess...
I think you have the most language that would maybe add to that, that is, option.
Right, so there is the, the one ordinance, there's two ordinances that are drafted before you write. One of them is the suspension, the other one just has exhibit A, and we were supposed to include language for exhibit A, that we just never settled on the language, I believe, but we could, at this point, just give the recommendation of what that exhibit A says, and based off of that other document in there, there's one little section right there that says, amends the code to say, the building includes or creates a single continuous floor area of 500,000 square feet or more without separation by a firewall. You can see that in the appendix L ordinance modifications.
Why don't we just do this? Why don't we just, for today?
Sorry.
No, you're okay, but let's just change the ordinance to say 500,000. So let's just do a simple number change today, and then Jesse wins because we're going to change the ordinance once, and then we'll change it again. But, right, yeah, if you guys all, if you agree with it. But then, that, that's just simple.
True.
And that, if there's a, if there's a mega warehouse that comes in, in the next whatever timeframe, and we haven't come back, then, then this would catch that, and it would, they would say, well, what do we have to do? And Jason might say, wait, we're almost done. This is the proposed language that we have, right? Fair to say, Jason? You know, if, if they were to come in in the meantime.
Would you, would you argue with this, that suspending it altogether is, is the better route?
Well, I've argued that already, but I don't want to keep arguing.
Or I think it's the better route.
Well, I don't know, but I always want to give him a forum for his strongly worded...
Certainly don't want to keep arguing it, so... Yeah, I think if, if we make the ordinance that says, so you may, you may need to tell them what they would need to do, if that's, if that's something you want to do.
Well, I, I, I mean, again, I guess that's where the, these, these questions that I want answers to, I, that's, you know, without good answers to questions, yeah, I'd be leaning more towards a suspension of something entirely, but, but, but maybe that's the, maybe that's threading the needle here, is adjusting it for a time being until we can discuss and debate the rest of it in, in public and, and have, have two sides to why people would be getting rid of something, so...
You good with that, Jesse?
Yeah, no, Mayor's point is spot on, though, because these questions, and, and I know Eddie said that he has answers to them, so like, there's probably, there's probably, like, we know there's two sides to every coin, but, yeah, there, I can see both ways, to be honest.
Yeah.
But I think that, I think a step in the right direction is, let's go to the 500,000, and then let's, I don't know, as fast as July 1st, if we can, get this ironed out, let's, let's figure this out, because if any of these things are true, like, it brings into question, should we be doing this at all, right? So I think that that is something that we need to discuss and, and really figure out. I'd be more in line with the 500,000 than the suspension, though, with us getting input from our fire chief saying that he is worried about something like that happening.
Yeah.
Catches anybody who might come in, large, you know, building, right? So it's a safety net, temporary.
Okay.
What procedure they, what would you like them to do, Joshua?
So there's that motion, sorry, there's the ordinance regarding the amendment, pull that one up, sorry. An ordinance amending appendix L to the building code in section 1404010, adopting that ordinance with a language that changes the 250,000 square foot requirement to 500,000 square feet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden with the assistance of legal counsel, but it's recorded here, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, and this is a roll call motion. Roll call vote, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Wow, you're still here?
And awake.
Well, you know, just from my, my perspective, not being in the room, this was the most unprepared I've ever heard staff talk about an issue before. Disappointing that you put that on us to make a decision like that, and that could be because I missed a ton of stuff, but this is just being, you know, a couple thousand miles away, that, that was a rough one.
Yeah, you probably should be here in the room better. I think, I think it was a decent discussion of, of what's...
I agree, Mike. I understand, I just, from this perspective, it was, that's a tough conversation to follow.
Yeah.
But I can't imagine what the public was like.
I don't care, they're in the room, they're smiling, all right with it. Yeah, I appreciate the discussion, I, I appreciate that, that point of view as well, but, but I appreciate the options. If, there's some significant questions that, that can be unearthed here, but I, I think it's a, I think it's a good, good process to discuss it and debate it at a later time, but I think this is a good threading of the needle as, as well here to, to move in that direction. So thank you, thank you guys for the discussion, and thank you for the presentations, thank you fire marshal and manager. Any other business that needs to come here? Okay. We have closed session? I would entertain a motion to go on a closed session.
No, we don't have, we don't have a closed session.
Nothing. Oh. Nothing on a closed session, generally, okay?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to adjourn, a roll call vote, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us, appreciate it.